Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, May 7th, 2024. This meeting of the Lake Oswego City Council is now called to order. Ms. Slender, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Buck.
Here.
Councilors Verdic.
Here.
And Boo.
Here.
Ralph.
Here.
Corrigan.
Here.
Afkan.
Here.
And Wenman.
Here.
Thank you very much. Now, everyone, will you please stand, remove your hats, and join us in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight, we're also joined by members of the Lake Oswego School District School Board and their team. But before we begin our joint meeting, we have a couple of presentations. First, May is ELLER'S DANLOWS Syndromes and Hypermobility Spectrum Disorders Awareness Month. Each are heritable connective tissue disorders that cause joint hypermobility, instability, and pain, affecting one in every 5,000 people. Awareness about these conditions can help improve lives and assist those living with EDS or HSD in Lake Oswego. And we declare May 2024 as ELLER'S DANLOWS Syndromes and Hypermobility Spectrum Disorders Awareness Month. This important proclamation will be signed and posted on the city's website. In May, we also celebrate Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. This year's theme is "Advancing Leaders Through Innovation." And we value and acknowledge the great achievements members of the AA-NHPI community have made in various fields, such as science, medicine, government, public service, along with education and technology. We proclaim May 2024 as Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month and join our fellow Americans nationwide in participating in this meaningful observance. The signed proclamation will be posted on our website, and we'll look forward to the citywide celebration at Millennium Plaza Park later this month. Our next presentation is one of our annual favorites, the See If I Were Mayor contest winners. So I'm going to pause and come to the front, and we're going to announce our winners in this exciting contest. So first, we'll share a little bit about what this contest is about. So the If I Were Mayor contest is an annual contest sponsored by the Oregon Mayors Association, where students in grades four through 12 from all over Oregon share their creative and inspirational ideas about what their city would look like if they were mayor. Lake Oswego experienced an overwhelming increase of 42% of submissions over last year. And we get a lot of submissions every year, but it just keeps growing. And I want to give thanks to parents and especially teachers in the district who engaged their students in this contest and even gave me the opportunity to come and speak with them about the role of a mayor, what the city does versus what the school district does, which is relevant, of course, here for tonight. And it's been great getting to have those interactions with the students. So we received over 50 very creative and interesting entries. And of course, while not every entry could be selected as one of the few winners, each was incredibly informative and helpful in understanding what is important to students and their peers who participated throughout the community. So after we considered all entries, we awarded first, second, and third place winners in the following categories. We have a poster category for grades four and five, and we have an essay category for middle schoolers in grades six through eight. Joining us this evening to have the honor of presenting the recipients with their certificates is Drishy Singh. Drishy is the first youth member, student member, to be involved in the If I Were Mayor selection process. She shares her time and passion with the city through her volunteerism, and she's an active participant on our Youth Leadership Council and on the Library Teen Advisory Board. She was also the lead author of a joint letter the Youth Leadership Council sent to Senate President Wagner advocating for a statewide ban on the sale of flavored tobacco products. So Drishy, thank you for being here to help us award this year's recipients. And at this time, I would like to call those recipients up. We have Jad Shaheen, Megan Rim, Luca Wanford, Torben Grosswortman, Gia Hill, and Kenzie James. Come on up, you all. Let's give them a round of applause. Okay, good job. Come on up. Come on up. Okay. Torben, we get to start with you. I know. Okay, come on up here. Okay, I know, you'll be fine. Okay. Do we have, okay, I know, we have your little rendering of their posters up on the screen for everyone to see, but it's, of course, always harder to see the reproduction. You did a really good job on this. So Torben's artistic representation won third place in the poster category. And Torben shared what he would consider if he was mayor. His ideas communicate, one, engaging his peers in a call to leadership so their voices can be heard in the decision-making process in schools, which is very important; opportunities for more clubs at schools, providing exploration for youth and finding hidden talents and sparking new interests; and meeting logistics, the advantages of a round table versus a rectangular table, which is a great point. Do you want to tell us a little bit more about that?
Uh...
Maybe first tell us, how old are you and what school do you go to?
Um, I'm 11, and I go to Forest Hills Elementary.
What's the benefit of a round table versus a rectangular table?
Well, when I put the, like, the round table there, I really thought, like, about leadership. Um, there is, there's, well, you'd have to read it, but the round table...
Round table is better.
Yeah, the round table just, like, symbolizes, like, leadership.
That's right. Hey, thank you very much. Let's give...
So that, so, like, no, nobody's, like, the head of the table, and nobody, like, so that everybody's, like, equal.
Yes. Very, very good. Congratulations. Drishy has your certificate. Good job, Torben. Okay, Gia. Gia, come on up. Gia won second place in the poster category, and Gia's poster shows her well-rounded vision. Her message actually aligns with city council goals of opening a recreation center and adopting an urban and community forest plan. Gia talked about the value of community gardens, which I know the Friends of Lusher Farms would really appreciate. Not only do they provide an opportunity to grow and harvest food, they offer a place to socialize, relax the mind, and move the body. Gia also noted the characteristics of a good leader that are important to her. It's humor, integrity, honor, perseverance, and collaboration. Great job, Gia. Can you tell us a little bit about your favorite topic on your poster?
Um, my favorite topic is probably, like, getting more off-leash dog parks because I have a dog, and, um, she's really heavy, and she likes to wrestle with my dad. And sometimes it hurts. So I think it would be good if, like, all the dogs in Lake Oswego had a place to, like, go and hang out with each other and, like, just play.
I could not agree more. Okay. Let's give Gia a big round of applause. Congratulations, Gia. Drishy has your certificate. Okay, Kenzie. Come on up. Kenzie and her thoughtful and colorful poster won first place in the poster contest. Her creation exudes an inclusive feel depicting happy Lake Oswego residents representing diversity amongst all ages and abilities. Along with tying her personal experience to create policy change regarding inclusivity, Kenzie presented another idea that creates bonding and meaningful relationships through an intergenerational volunteer program. Kenzie not only provided the why, but also how she would accomplish her goals. And as the first-place winner, Kenzie was entered into the Oregon Mayors Association statewide contest for a chance to win up to $500. So, Kenzie, will you tell us a little bit about yourself, what school you go to, what age? And then tell us, we want to hear a little bit more about this intergenerational volunteer program.
Um, my name is Kenzie James. I am 10 years old, and I'm in fourth grade, and I go to Lake Grove. And, um, thank you. And what was the question again?
Tell us a little bit more about the intergenerational volunteer program.
Oh, the intergenerational one. So I had, like, an idea about, um, it's one with the rainbow up there. Um, I had an idea about how, like, people my age, like, 10, 11, 12, 9, 8, however, and people my grandma's age, like, 70, around there.
Ish.
Ish, yeah. And then also, like, teenagers, like, 17, 18, teenagers that can drive, because, yeah. And, um, they would get into groups of three, one of each person in age, like, one my age, one teenager, and one, like, old person. And, um, and they would get into groups of three, one of each, and they would do good deeds for each other. And it doesn't have to be the deeds that I put, like, as an example. It can really be, like, anything. They have to, like, discuss it, you know? But it could be, like, the older person, like, helps tutor the teenager, and the my age, like, elementary school, middle school. And then, um, the my age people, we do chores for the teenagers and the, um, older people. And, like, maybe for the teenagers, like, clean their room, because I know it will probably get really messy. And, um, then the teenagers can, like, drive the kids around on where they want to go, like, you know, if they want to go to Disneyland, or, like, if they, and same for, like, driving the older people around. So that's my idea with, like, the older, yeah.
I would like to take your daughter home. Congratulations. Yeah, Drishy, definitely. Let's give Kenzie a big round of applause. Okay, Jod. Okay, now we're moving on to our middle school essay contest. And Jod's clever opening in his essay captured our attention. I'm going to read it. "It would spark huge global news. Everyone hollering, 'Why would they put a 14-year-old in charge? If once I woke up with an envelope in the mail proclaiming I would be required to be mayor, I would be shocked too. Imagine the responsibility that comes with having such a role." Yes, hopefully it wouldn't be by surprise, but you know, you never know. So not only did Jad capture attention with his clever opening, he captured our attention by citing his three rules of action in a very organized manner. One rule he highlighted is his perspective with a self-operating democratic socialist system that would ensure the community has many opportunities to be heard because such a system would be simplistic in nature. Another rule of action is to incorporate more youth by engaging them to share their voice in order to hear a fresh perspective. We love that. Jad, will you tell us a little bit about yourself, what school you go to, what age? And then tell us, we want to hear a little bit more about this intergenerational volunteer program.
Um, my name is Kenzie James. I am 10 years old, and I'm in fourth grade, and I go to Lake Grove. And, um, thank you. And what was the question again?
Tell us a little bit more about the intergenerational volunteer program.
Oh, the intergenerational one. So I had, like, an idea about, um, it's one with the rainbow up there. Um, I had an idea about how, like, people my age, like, 10, 11, 12, 9, 8, however, and people my grandma's age, like, 70, around there. Ish, yeah. And then also, like, teenagers, like, 17, 18, teenagers that can drive, because, yeah. And, um, they would get into groups of three, one of each person in age, like, one my age, one teenager, and one, like, old person. And, um, and they would get into groups of three, one of each, and they would do good deeds for each other. And it doesn't have to be the deeds that I put, like, as an example. It can really be, like, anything. They have to, like, discuss it, you know? But it could be, like, the older person, like, helps tutor the teenager, and the my age, like, elementary school, middle school. And then, um, the my age people, we do chores for the teenagers and the, um, older people. And, like, maybe for the teenagers, like, clean their room, because I know it will probably get really messy. And, um, then the teenagers can, like, drive the kids around on where they want to go, like, you know, if they want to go to Disneyland, or, like, if they, and same for, like, driving the older people around. So that's my idea with, like, the older, yeah.
I would like to take your daughter home. Congratulations. Yeah, Drishy, definitely. Let's give Kenzie a big round of applause. Okay, Jod. Okay, now we're moving on to our middle school essay contest. And Jod's clever opening in his essay captured our attention. I'm going to read it. "It would spark huge global news. Everyone hollering, 'Why would they put a 14-year-old in charge? If once I woke up with an envelope in the mail proclaiming I would be required to be mayor, I would be shocked too. Imagine the responsibility that comes with having such a role." Yes, hopefully it wouldn't be by surprise, but you know, you never know. So not only did Jad capture attention with his clever opening, he captured our attention by citing his three rules of action in a very organized manner. One rule he highlighted is his perspective with a self-operating democratic socialist system that would ensure the community has many opportunities to be heard because such a system would be simplistic in nature. Another rule of action is to incorporate more youth by engaging them to share their voice in order to hear a fresh perspective. We love that. Jad, will you tell us a little bit about yourself, what school you go to, and highlight one of your rules for us?
Okay, so my name is Jad Shaheen, and I go to Lake Oswego Junior High School, and I'm in eighth grade. And one of my rules was, because obviously being mayor at 14 would be pretty hard, I said one of my rules would be the... Well, I have three rules. One of my rules would, like, first of all, get the attention of, like, the media and, like, the people who live in Lake Oswego, because people are obviously going to be confused about, like, a 14-year-old being in charge. And then I'll, like, let them see my vision and, like, how I'll let them do more doing than I'm doing, kind of. So it's more fair on their side, because they probably have more knowledge than me since they're older and have more wisdom.
That's great. Congratulations. Let's give Jad a round of applause. Good job. Okay, Megan. So Megan took second place in the essay contest. And her approach of "one step at a time, one solution at a time, and work to bring the community together" communicated a simple and pragmatic structure while engaging community members through volunteerism. She recognizes the technology gap between older adults and teenagers. Bringing them together would benefit both groups and encourage an exchange that expresses both differences and similarities among each other. Megan also shared that she read an article about ProSWOCS that are more visible to drivers, reducing the amount of injuries and casualties to pedestrians. I thought that was a very good idea. Megan, tell us a little bit about...
About the role of a mayor, what the city does versus what the school district does, which is relevant, of course, here for tonight. And it's been great getting to have those interactions with the students. So we received over 50 very creative and interesting entries. And of course, while not every entry could be selected as one of the few winners, each was incredibly informative and helpful in understanding what is important to students and their peers who participated throughout the community. So after we considered all entries, we awarded first, second, and third place winners in the following categories. We have a poster category for grades four and five, and we have an essay category for middle schoolers in grades six through eight. Joining us this evening to have the honor of presenting the recipients with their certificates is Drishy Singh. Drishy is the first youth member, student member, to be involved in the If I Were Mayor selection process. She shares her time and passion with the city through her volunteerism, and she's an active participant on our Youth Leadership Council and on the Library Teen Advisory Board. She was also the lead author of a joint letter the Youth Leadership Council sent to Senate President Wagner advocating for a statewide ban on the sale of flavored tobacco products. So, Drishy, thank you for being here to help us award this year's recipients. Now, this time, I would like to call those recipients up. We have Jad Shaheen, Megan Rim, Luca Wanford, Torben Grosswortman, Gia Hill, and Kenzie James coming up, you all. Let's give them a round of applause. Good job. Come on up, come on up. Okay, Torben, we get to start with you, I know. Okay, come on up here. Okay, I know, you'll be fine. Okay. Do we have Tor- okay, I know, we have your little rendering of their posters up on the screen for everyone to see, but it's, of course, always harder to see the reproduction. You did a really good job on this. So, Torben's artistic representation won third place in the poster category. And Torben shared what he would consider if he was mayor. His ideas communicate, one, engaging his peers in a call to leadership so their voices can be heard in the decision-making process in schools, which is very important, opportunities for more clubs at schools, providing exploration for youth and finding hidden talents and sparking new interests, and meeting logistics, the advantages of a round table versus a rectangular table, which is a great point. Do you want to tell us a little bit more about that?
Uh...
Maybe first tell us what, how old are you and what school do you go to?
Um, I'm 11 and I go to Forest Hills Elementary.
What's, what's the benefit of a round table versus a rectangular table?
Well, when I put the, like, the round table there, I really thought, like, about leadership, um, there is, there's, well, you'd have to read it, but the round table-
Round table is better.
Yeah, the round table just, like, symbolizes, like, leadership.
That's right. Hey, thank you very much. Let's give-
So that, so like, no, nobody's like the head of the table and nobody, like, so that everybody's like equal.
Yes. Very, very good. Congratulations. Drishy has your certificate. Good job, Torben. Okay, Gia. Gia, come on up. Gia won second place in the poster category, and Gia's poster shows her well-rounded vision. Her message actually aligns with City Council goals of opening a recreation center and adopting an urban and community forest plan. Gia talked about the value of community gardens, which I know the Friends of Luscher Farms would really appreciate. Not only do they provide an opportunity to grow and harvest food, they offer a place to socialize, relax the mind, and move the body. Gia also noted the characteristics of a good leader that are important to her. It's humor, integrity, honor, perseverance, and collaboration. Great job, Gia. Can you tell us a little bit about your favorite topic on your poster?
Um, my favorite topic is probably, like, getting more off-leash dog parks because I have a dog, and, um, she's really heavy, and she likes to wrestle with my dad, and sometimes it hurts. So I think it would be good if, like, all the dogs in Lake Oswego had a place to, like, go and hang out with each other and, like, just play.
I could not agree more. Okay. Let's give Gia a big round of applause. Congratulations, Gia. Drishy has your certificate. Okay, Kenzie, come on up. Kenzie and her thoughtful and colorful poster won first place in the poster contest. Her creation exudes an inclusive feel depicting happy Lake Oswego residents representing diversity amongst all ages and abilities. Along with tying her personal experience to create policy change regarding inclusivity, Kenzie presented another idea that creates bonding and meaningful relationships through an intergenerational volunteer program. Kenzie not only provided the why, but also how she would accomplish her goals. And as the first-place winner, Kenzie was entered into the Oregon Mayors Association statewide contest for a chance to win up to $500. So, Kenzie, will you tell us a little bit about yourself, what school you go to, what age, and then tell us, we want to hear a little bit more about this intergenerational volunteer program?
Um, my name is Kenzie James. I am 10 years old, and I'm in fourth grade, and I go to Lake Grove. And, um, thank you. And, what was the question again?
Tell us a little bit more about the intergenerational volunteer program.
Oh, the intergenerational one. So, I had, like, an idea about, um, it's one with the rainbow up there. Um, I had an idea about how, like, people my age, like, 10, 11, 12, 9, 8, however, and people my grandma's age, like, 70, around there.
Ish.
Ish, yeah. And then also, like, teenagers, like, 17, 18, teenagers that can drive, because, yeah. And, um, they would get into groups of three, one of each person in age, like, one my age, one teenager, and one, like, old person. And, um, and they would get into groups of three, one of each, and they would do good deeds for each other. And it doesn't have to be the deeds that I put, like, as an example, it can really be, like, anything, they have to, like, discuss it, you know? But it could be, like, the older person, like, helps tutor the teenager and the my-age, like, elementary school, middle school, and then, um, the my-age people, we do chores for the teenagers and the, um, older people. And, like, maybe for the teenagers, like, clean their room, because I know it will probably get really messy. And, um, then the teenagers can, like, drive the kids around on where they want to go, like, you know, if they want to go to Disneyland, or, like, if they, and same for, like, driving the older people around. So that's my idea with, like, the older, yeah.
I would like to take your daughter home. Congratulations. Yeah, Drishy, definitely, guys. Give Kenzie a big round of applause. Okay, Jod. Okay, now we're moving on to our middle school essay contest. And Jod's clever opening in his essay captured our attention. I'm going to read it. "It would spark huge global news. Everyone hollering, 'Why would they put a 14-year-old in charge? If once I woke up with an envelope in the mail proclaiming I would be required to be mayor, I would be shocked too. Imagine the responsibility that comes with having such a role.'" Yes, hopefully it wouldn't be by surprise, but you know, you never know. So not only did Jad capture attention with his clever opening, he captured our attention by citing his three rules of action in a very organized manner. One rule he highlighted is his perspective with a self-operating democratic socialist system that would ensure the community has many opportunities to be heard because such a system would be simplistic in nature. Another rule of action is to incorporate more youth by engaging them to share their voice in order to hear a fresh perspective. We love that. Jad, will you tell us a little bit about yourself, what school you go to, and highlight one of your rules for us?
Okay, so my name is Jad Shaheen, and I go to Lake Oswego Junior High School, and I'm in eighth grade. And one of my rules was, because obviously being mayor at 14 would be pretty hard, I said one of my rules would be the, I, well, I have three rules. One of my rules would, like, first of all, get the attention of, like, the media and, like, the people who live in Lake Oswego, because people are obviously going to be confused about, like, a 14-year-old being in charge. And then I'll, like, let them see my vision and, like, how I'll let them do more doing than I'm doing, kind of, so it's more fair on their side, because they probably have more knowledge than me since they're older and have more wisdom.
That's great. Congratulations. Let's give Jad a round of applause. Good job. So Megan took second place in the essay contest, and her approach of "one step at a time, one solution at a time, and work to bring the community together" communicated a simple and pragmatic structure while engaging community members through volunteerism. She recognizes the technology gap between older adults and teenagers. Bringing them together would benefit both groups and encourage an exchange that expresses both the differences and similarities among each other. Megan also shared that she read an article about pros walks that are more visible to drivers, reducing the amount of injuries and casualties to pedestrians. I thought that was a very good idea. Megan, tell us a little bit about yourself, what school you go to, and your favorite topic from your essay.
Um, my name is Megan Rim. I am 13 years old and an eighth grader at Lake Ridge Middle School. Um, one of the topics that really I felt like I went and connected to was the topic of bringing more volunteer opportunities for high schoolers or even maybe middle schoolers to be able to connect with senior citizens and help them out with technology. I know that my high school that I will go to next year has a certain amount of volunteer hours that you must complete, and I thought that maybe giving an opportunity to be able to bridge the gap between senior citizens and maybe our teenagers, pre-teens, could help bring them together and build a better community.
That's great. And I have to say that I, intergenerational idea was an idea that you really eloquently presented, but that was a common theme we saw in many of the essays this year, and it's a great idea and great to see students in the community wanting to connect with all the residents and work together. Congratulations, Megan. Let's give a big round of applause, and Drishy has your certificate here. Luca. Okay, this is Luca Wanford. Luca won first place in our essay contest, and so Luca will also be entered in the Oregon Mayors Association statewide contest for a chance to win up to $500. Luca's well-written and extremely organized essay stood out in the category for a number of reasons. In addition to stating the desire to address important issues, Luca demonstrated knowledge of the mayor's role in particular and begins his essay with the important quality of listening to the community. He identified an issue, included community engagement via a survey, and captured the primary city department that would execute and resolve the issue. It realizes the importance of sustainability through clean energy and how it touches the many facets of city and everyday life. And expresses the importance of communication and engagement through community events and a state-of-the-city address in order to encourage a safer, cleaner, supportive, and inclusive environment. Luca, you did a great job with this essay. We really appreciate when you understand the role and how city works and that every process is multifaceted. So tell us a little bit about yourself, where you go to school, and one of your favorite ideas from the essay.
Um, okay, uh, I'm Luca, I'm 12, and I go to Lake Ridge Middle School. And I think my favorite idea might have been the, um, the community events, just, like, bringing people together to educate them on topics.
What's your favorite community event in Lake Oswego?
Hmm, I'm not sure.
Sorry to put you on the spot. Everyone, let's give Luca a big round of applause. Good job, Luca. Congratulations. Drishy has your certificate. One more time, a big round of applause to all of our entries, and thank you for everyone for participating. Good job to all of you. Congratulations. Thank you all for being here. Oh, you guys, we're going to take a picture. We're going to take a picture. Now, folks, we're just going to take a short recess to allow folks to file out who may Now, folks, we're just going to take a short recess to allow folks to file out who may not want to stay for the rest of the meeting, so we'll be back in about five minutes. Okay, everyone, we're back in order for our joint meeting with the Lake Oswego School Board. We are joined by members of the board, Chair Bills, Vice Chair Wallin, Director Gupta, Director Hartman, and Director Eard. Welcome to you all, and Superintendent Shealy, Dr. Shealy, welcome. To, oh, oh, student board members, no? No, no student board member, okay, okay. To set the stage for us tonight, I wanted to take a moment first by thanking you all for making the time to be here this evening. It's great we have our regular, to have our regular meetings together. You know, our two bodies serve distinct yet overlapping constituencies, and our work together over the years has focused on that overlap and really endeavored to find areas where we can work together to better serve students and the community together than we'd ever be able to do separately. We know that right now you're engaged in a discussion of your own facility's needs in anticipation of a bond renewal, the final in a series of bonds needed to modernize, upgrade, and right-size the district. We also understand that that process contemplates changes to potential use of current sites and that you're exploring all various options through your own community engagement, and we look forward tonight to learning more about your timeline and process. And simultaneously, the city has been engaging residents around the long-term needs of our library, a facility that's been undersized since the 1980s but that's also the most used per capita in the entire region. In addition to its small size, the facility has structural deficiencies, and its location makes access challenging, especially for students. Community members of all ages have made it clear that the library as it currently stands is really unable to meet many of the needs of a modern community, and we look forward to sharing more about that tonight as well. We also have in mind the realization of other long-term community plans which envision a community center for neighborhood gathering, cultural celebration, lifelong learning, and public space for community enjoyment in the Lake Grove Town Center. Through the Lake Grove Urban Renewal Area, the city has a strong funding mechanism in place to bring a potential project to fruition in Lake Grove that could meet these long-term community needs benefiting local students, adjacent neighbors, and the community at large. Now, there is no doubt how immensely challenging school facilities' decisions are. We all know that, especially in a small community. And the last thing any resident, student, or parent would want is for space that's currently in the public domain that serves as a hub of learning and civic life to either sit fallow, be sold, or be capitalized completely out of its public purpose designation. With that in mind, we want to let the district know that should it, through its own process, find that repurposing in whole or in part the Lake Grove Elementary School site fits in the best interest of the district, the city would like to engage in a deeper discussion about a community center project, a vision that would maintain many of the features that make the school such an attractive centerpiece of the neighborhood in a way that would continue to serve both your direct constituents, the students, as well as residents of all ages. Such a discussion would be in keeping with the Lake Grove Village Center Plan, which calls for this type of community space in the town center, space that would be lost should the school close without a community plan to mitigate. We want to be crystal clear in our cognition that the factors you consider in that decision are centered around the long-term needs of the district and those which are in the best interests of the students. Your decisions made through your own engagement and discernment process are completely independent from the conceptual idea we're, what we'd like to present here tonight, and we heavily respect your independent process. Through the timing of our separate needs and processes, we can dream creatively about what could be, but we know that those dreams will only see reality, just as with our other partnerships, if they are truly within the best interests of the students, the district, the city, and the community at large, recognizing that all of our decisions involve often very difficult trade-offs. We're here tonight in the open to share ideas, to think comprehensively, understand each other's processes, and to recognize that our decisions, no matter how difficult, are always made with the best long-term interests of our entire community at heart. So, we appreciate your open ears and minds and your presence here tonight. Chair Bills.
Fantastic. Thank you very much, Mayor Buck. It's a pleasure to be here, to talk with the city and to hear what the potential is, what the vision is. I think that creative visioning is an important part of the process. I really respect your acknowledgement that while we do have shared interests in some regards, we do also have two distinct processes that have to be respected and followed. You know, we're fortunate, I think, in Lake Oswego that we have a relationship with the city that has provided opportunities for synergy, things like the LoRAC and other ways in which we've been able to work together. And I think that's, that's not something that's necessarily present in every, every city, every community. Our timing is obviously different than yours, and as you suggested, there are decisions that the school has to make independent of the plans that you guys envision. But we're fortunate to have those potential plans hanging out there should things align for us to take advantage of them. So, thank you very much. Thank you for having us all here and offering to share those thoughts with us. I'd like to ask our superintendent, Jennifer Shealy, to talk a little bit about our process in detail, what that timing looks like, and how that would proceed.
Thank you, Chair Bills.
Superintendent, I would propose is the first thing we'd like to talk about is what does the library do that is, that has overlap with what the district does? And Director Kelly and two of our library managers are going to give you a quick overview of what goes on at the library that we think supports the mission of the Lake Oswego School District. Then I'm going to give you the same presentation I have given to several groups, including your Long Range Facility Task Force, about what the idea is. And then Superintendent Shealy will close out with where are you guys headed on your decision, and we respect and understand that the timing hasn't been perfect all along. So, is that all right with the two of you? Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, that sounds great.
Yes.
Okay, terrific. So I'm going to turn it over to Director Kelly and Andrea and Allison and ask them to sort of give you a quick overview of what goes on in the library that supports lifelong learning in Lake Oswego.
Hi, Director Kelly.
Oh. Okay, the mic is on. Thank you, Mayor, City Council, and members of the school board for your time this evening. I'm the Lake Oswego Public Library Director, Melissa Kelly, and I'm joined this evening by our Youth Services Manager, Andrea Milano, and our Adult Services Manager, Allison Arnold. And we're here to provide a brief overview of the range of classes and events offered through the public library and to highlight the community benefits provided by these offerings. We'll also take a quick look at participation data and library facility needs. It's commonly known that libraries provide helpful staff and access to collections, but less known is how the library's role has expanded and continues to expand to meet community needs and in response to community needs. Modern libraries are not warehouses for books. They're active hubs of information, creativity, and community, bringing people together with community spaces and high-quality public education services designed to meet the needs and interests of residents at each stage of life. Our Lake Oswego School District is well-known for being an exceptional educational system, and our public library serves as an essential support component, providing community-wide access to lifelong learning to all age groups, seven days a week and during school breaks. Library classes cover many forms of literacy: early learning, social skills, digital and technological literacy, how to conduct research, how to search for jobs, job-searching skills, financial literacy, and more. Libraries also intentionally develop services and events to support the holistic well-being of our community, including intellectual, cultural, social, and emotional health. By providing free access to education for all, the library actively supports the learning continuum, drives economic advancement, fosters inclusivity and community connection, and enhances quality of life. And I'll turn it over to Andrea.
Six early literacy skills serve as the foundation for successfully learning to read and write. Of those skills, print motivation, the love of reading, is the first to develop, which is why storytime for babies 0 to 12 months old is so important. After that, age-appropriate storytimes ensure that children develop other early literacy skills at just the right time. They learn to talk, write, sing, read, and play, all while building their love of reading. Librarians offer parents and caregivers a model for how to interact with their child and how to encourage early literacy: reading out loud and pausing to talk about words, allowing their child to take the lead on exploring the pages of a book, singing off key because their child loves their voice no matter what, pointing to words on a page together and reading the everyday signs they see in the world around them. Storytime, though, is not just about early learning. It can be the most important social interaction that a child and their caregiver have with others. New parents support each other and share experiences and tips in a welcoming, free, and supportive space. As babies learn to crawl, listening to the sound of stories and songs, they also learn how to interact with each other and make friends. As their language skills develop, so do their social skills, and the one, two, and three-year-olds prepare for success when they start school. Our youngest visitors love reading so much that when they are challenged to read 1,000 books before kindergarten, they are excited, enthusiastic, and eager to accomplish the goal. Any kindergarten teacher will tell you that a child that has read 1,000 books before kindergarten arrives in their classroom ready to learn. After children are in school, the public library remains a touchstone of learning. Families meet each other at the library for crafts, Lego club, and special shows. The number of library books that are checked out during summer and winter break soars exponentially. Early release Thursdays are six-year-old Nora's favorite day. She gets to visit her school library during the day and the public library when school gets out. The library takes regular storytime breaks to welcome class field trips at which kids are thrilled to get their own library card. And when librarians then visit classrooms to promote summer reading, they reinforce the joy and importance of books and the power of that library card. Summer reading programs play a critical role in combating the loss of learning that can occur during school breaks. Free books, incentives, and family programs keep Lake Oswego's children at the top of their learning game. The library's role evolves as students become old enough to volunteer for the Summer Library Challenge, join the Teen Advisory Board, use the library as a meetup spot for studying or tutoring, and as that third place that we all need every now and then. Cleo Co. says, "The library is an essential experience every child deserves to have and an invaluable service to the community. I can't understate the library's influence on the person I am today. Being able to freely access books helped me become fluent in English and developed my interest in writing. From a fourth grader who was fresh to the States and didn't know any English to the editor-in-chief of my high school newspaper, I have the library to thank for this dramatic Readiness to learn and to succeed is grounded not just in academic support but in- Readiness to learn and to succeed is grounded not just in academic support, but in well-being and community. Fun programming for families during the summer, scheduled in the park out of necessity during the pandemic, are now an annual part of many families' summer plans. And where else but the public library might you find teens filming a Taylor Swift-inspired public service announcement to promote their own summer reading program?
The library offers a wide range of events and classes for adults that can help improve their quality of life. We intentionally organize events that support many different forms of literacy. For example, we offer financial literacy programs such as estate planning, digital literacy programs, including one-on-one tech help appointments, and civic and environmental literacy programs such as Civics 101 classes and presentations on addressing the climate crisis. Patrons tell us that they enjoy attending our events because they learn practical skills that are useful to their work or personal lives. Many have also shared with us that our programs in the humanities and the arts have nourished their spirits by inspiring them to engage in creative expression or aesthetic appreciation, and by encouraging them to think and talk about ethics, values, history, art, and literature. Several of our events are offered on a monthly series, which gives people the opportunity to develop meaningful social connections over the long term. One thing we all learned during the pandemic is just how important it is for us to stay connected to one another. People are doing just that at our monthly World Languages Conversation Group, author talks, and more. The library also plans a number of high-quality, multi-generational, and cultural events in collaboration with our community partners. Our award-winning Lake Oswego Reads series provides our community with a shared experience of intellectual and community engagement by bringing our city together to read and discuss one book each year. Our annual Martin Luther King Day Community Celebration reflects on Dr. King's teachings and inspires attendees to volunteer with local service organizations that are committed to furthering his legacy. And at our annual Lunar New Year Festival, we learn about and appreciate the many cultures that celebrate Lunar New Year. Each of these events is for all ages, from very young children on up to seniors. And as Kenzie pointed out earlier, we know that multi-generational events help to reduce social isolation by allowing different generations to learn from each other and share meaningful experiences. And our cultural events provide opportunities for intercultural exchange. They help to foster a sense of appreciation and belonging, which makes Lake Oswego a more welcoming and stronger community. Demand for programming has grown exponentially since our building was constructed over 40 years ago. In the past 20 years alone, our library has increased the number of classes and events offered by 275%. And we've experienced an over 275% increase in the number of attendees. These statistics illustrate the increased demand for classes and events and how our library has responded within the limitations of our facility. As an example, the library's regular early literacy storytimes and STEAM events are at or over capacity on a frequent basis, filling the floor space of the children's library from nearly wall to wall. The library also works with wonderful community partners and already leverages other facilities and spaces in the community to host a number of our events. Last year, Lake Oswego Public Library hosted an average of 1.5 classes or event offerings per day. We offered a total of 291 events specifically for youth in the last year alone, delivered to nearly 13,000 youth and caregivers in attendance. The Lunar New Year Festival had the single highest event attendance at over 1,100 residents. This is a photo from Lunar New Year showing community demand to attend this popular event.
But our library cannot measure up to what comparable libraries are able to offer to their communities due to space constraints. Overall themes that we heard from residents during the 2023 library visioning process are related to the community's intention for the library to be a community hub and active learning space accessible to all. The library visioning process told us the library should be for the people, a cornerstone of civic life, a community builder, a learning hub for all, and a leader and innovator. The current library facility creates barriers to this vision and results in inefficient delivery of services. And library staff regularly hear from residents who visit other libraries because of their larger facilities, dedicated event spaces, and modern amenities. Our current facility was not designed with modern library services in mind, nor to accommodate the population size we now serve. Specific facility needs identified in the visioning process include demand for a café-style space, again, that third space that folks need outside of home or work or school, large flexible event and meeting spaces, a larger children's area with amenities, dedicated space for the unique needs of tweens and teens, reservable study rooms, it's very important to our teens, and others as well, maker space or emerging technology lab, sensory-friendly areas of the library, again, so it's accessible to all, and adjacent outdoor space. And the current library facility is lacking in these key spaces desired by the community, notably including space to accommodate the number of participants who wish to attend our valuable classes and events. It's clear that Lake Oswego's needs are significantly underserved by the current shortage of library facility space, and we look forward to working with the community in the future to create a solution for better access to enhanced and innovative library events and services. Thank you so much for your time, and we're open for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Director Kelly. It's just a real appreciation to you and the team for all you do within that facility to create all of these programs, you know, despite not having all the right space. I think one of the reasons the community is so endeared to the library is that you really, you make it work, and you've done a great job serving a huge number of people in a facility that's just much too small for the size of community, but you do it with a great attitude, and you do a great job at it. So thank you all very much. Does anyone have any questions for our library team? Okay, well, thank you all for the presentation. We really appreciate it.
Thank you again. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Bennett?
Right. I asked Andrea and Allison if they'd ever been at the table before, and they said no, so I hope that this, that they'll come back. I hope this was a positive experience for them. All right, I want to follow this. I think, well, everyone knows this, that when the city council set goals back in late January, one of the things they were interested in exploring was the possibility of a community center that could house a new library on the west side of town. We happen to know that you all were in the same, in the conversation about your long-range facility planning at the same time, and we also happen to know that you have decisions to make about which elementary schools are going to remain elementary schools. And we know that in part because all these lovely people are here in t-shirts expressing their opinions about the subject, but we also know that because we've had a chance to meet with you before to talk about this. It just so happened that what you were doing really aligned with some stuff that we were doing all at the same time. So in 2023, we completed a visioning project for the library. We also began our work on the long-range plan for our Parks and Recreation Department and facilities, and we also conducted our biennial community survey. And it was really remarkable that we heard the same things thematically across all three of those efforts. We heard a desire from the community for inclusive facilities that are easy to find and easy to use. We heard a lot of concern and desire for community connection. I'm sure coming out of the pandemic is part of what happened, but facilities and programming that allow people to come together, to exchange ideas, actually to look after their social, emotional, and intellectual health. We heard a lot of desire for intergenerational spaces and for spaces that serve people of different physical abilities as well. We heard about the need for environmentally sustainable but also resilient-to-disaster facilities. Again, intergenerational programming. We hear every time we survey about the need for event space, and loud and clear across all three documents, all three efforts, we heard about the need to better serve our teens in our community. I would say that in the community survey, the one, well, one of the top five things we heard concerns about is just making sure there was more for people between the ages of 12 and 18 to actually do in the community. So it all sort of happened at the same time. And so knowing that there was a discussion about what might happen with Lake Grove, the council talked about whether that, if you decide to repurpose that facility, and we know that's your decision that you will make on your own timeline, is there an opportunity to converse about the possibility of addressing the needs that we've identified through Parks Plan 2040, the library visioning effort, and the community service on that property? And I can talk about why the Lake Grove Urban Renewal Area is an important component in a minute, but again, it felt like all of the elements aligned in that the Lake Grove Village Center Plan, which was adopted in 2006, spoke to the need for a community center, including a library. We are learning much more about facilities where communities are providing a suite, not just a library and not just a recreation facility, but a suite of different kinds of services across the spectrum. And the opportunity to think about these spaces is not one department or one function, but really shared functions and overlapping needs for the community. And we really feel that as we have worked on the LoRAC, we've learned that the other gap in city services is really thinking carefully not just about our physical health and our ability to stay physically active, but our need for social, emotional, mental health, intellectual development, and just community well-being. And then last but not least, we do know that our facility, we outgrew it in 1988, it was built in 1983, and that it will be very expensive to repair. The other thing, and I think, I think Director Hartman was on the, School Board Member Hartman was on our visioning effort, one of the things we consistently heard from folks as part of the library visioning effort is because it's tucked away in a neighborhood, which some of us love, because it's tucked away in a neighborhood, a lot of people in the community don't even know where the library is. So as I say, we've done a lot of research about communities that are choosing to think about community centers that also happen to home libraries as opposed to thinking about libraries as just standalone facility. Here are some examples of places where that's going on, where you have places where you're meeting a variety of needs, not just library-specific needs, recreational, physical health, community events, other things are happening in these spaces because it isn't really a standalone function. And I think Melissa and her team talked a little about this. In modern libraries, you don't go just to go to the library, you go to try out a, I saw in a library I got to visit, a technology petting zoo. Very interesting idea, like I could come up and play with a piece of technology in a library, very, I didn't have to go to the Apple Store for it. But a variety of needs of our residents in a single space, not thinking about a library necessarily to, as a quiet place where you go just to read or research, but as a place where you go to gather and connect with other people. Here's some examples of what's happening in modern libraries around children's, like it's not, it's not the library I grew up in where you would have had to be quiet and you would have been shushed. It's a library where play is integrated with your, your visit to the library. Similarly, teen centers, I think you all probably know that the city runs, I guess that's the other thing that I should say at this point, the city runs an award-winning teen program, but we do it in the basement of a church, and it's really great, but it's another, a program that we are doing an excellent job with in under, sort of under, well, inadequate facilities, right? It's another program that we run that's tucked away in a neighborhood as opposed to something that's easy to get to. We run a shuttle service. I know that buses bring kids to our teen center as well because it's not necessarily really easy to get there. We have an opportunity to think about integrated teen programming that's offered by our Parks Department with integrated teen programming that could be offered by the Lake Oswego Public Library. I like, it's, the Maker Spaces up here, and if you've visited any libraries recently, you've seen Maker Spaces, but my personal favorite is the Recording Studio, the idea that we would offer kids who want to play and want to, how to learn how to record and mix and produce music, a place that they can do that in public is amazing. And then, of course, we have an opportunity for both indoor and outdoor multipurpose and event spaces. Here are just some examples. I love those Wyden and Kennedy-style steps because I think you can host a variety of types of activities and events in them, but you can also see in that, that one library is a little bit, obviously, in a more urban place, but you can see the opportunity to have integrated plaza space but also space for people to play. There's tons of those examples. We could really geek out on the opportunities to do that. I think that studio out in the top might be Hillsborough 2. So here's what the, that's, this is the idea, and a lot of folks have asked, how many square feet do you need? How many acres do you need? The reality is, we, we're not going to invest in any of that work until we know what you're doing, because if you decide to keep Lake Grove an elementary school, and that's fine, then we just have to wait for a piece of property to become available for us to do this. But should you decide that your interest, well, no, that it's in the best interest of the district to close that school or to repurpose that school, then we would start the second part of this process. The reason Lake Grove is attractive is it's in our existing Lake Grove Urban Renewal Area. And what that essentially means, in addition to being an area where we have planned for and has made investments in infrastructure for the purpose of creating economic activity, it also means that urban renewal funding is available to us to build a project. And that would mean that we could build the majority of the project without raising taxes. We also believe that the Lake Grove Urban Renewal Plan offers us opportunities to think about shared spaces. We've talked about the fact that we don't have a comparable event space to Millennium Plaza, although I think of Millennium Plaza as sort of the formal living room, and I think what we want to build out there is the family room. But a place to have concerts, a place to have farmers' markets, a place where people can have a fountain or just experience a place where you can hang out or have a party in a public space. It also could potentially, depending on what else might happen on the property, allow for shared uses, like shared event space, shared meeting space, shared parking, probably resulting in a cost savings to everybody who might be thinking about that site. But frankly, if we're going to use urban renewal dollars, we have to be in that blue area on the map. So the other facilities that you guys are thinking about or not, obviously, in that blue area on the map, and so would probably be cost prohibitive. I think that's all, other than I wanted to show you a few of these photos, the ones in the library, I think, are pretty obvious, but the one up above is our indoor playground, which we offer at Christ Church Parish. And then my personal favorite is a Bob Ross painting class, where not only do you learn to paint like Bob Ross, you just learn how to dress like Bob Ross. So, all right, that's all. I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett. Any questions for Director?
I just, is there an expiration on the renewal district?
Yeah, right, the current, the current district would expire if we didn't extend its life in 2034, but should we gonna, should we build this project, what we would do is we would extend the life of the district for another 30 years, so it would go to 2036. And I think you all know, and if you don't, well, if we become interested in this, that the way urban renewal law has changed in Oregon, we would actually have to share some of the revenue with all y'all, and then there's other things that would flow to the district. So even though taxes wouldn't go up, which probably would mean that we need the district to last a little bit longer because of our ability to finance the project.
Councilor Raff?
Thank you. Assuming that tomorrow, Lake Grove became available to use, I mean, like, super quick, right? How long would it take us, the city, to collect the necessary urban renewal funds to actually do the project?
So...
Like, are we talking a year? Are we talking 30 years?
Yeah, so the first thing would happen if this were to happen for us is that we'd have to do the urban renewal study, and that would tell us when we could, so we'll sell bonds, right? We'll use the revenue to sell a bond, and we probably won't be able to sell the bond in year one. It'll probably be a couple of years for the increment to grow enough before we could have enough revenue to sell the bond. But, you know, because we haven't put pen to paper, we don't have any consultants on this project, we don't have an architect, it'd be two to three years before we could get this project out of the ground under best-case scenario.
Two to three years to get even, like, think about starting it? Like, thinking about...
Well, if you, if y'all gave us the go-ahead, if, tomorrow, which you won't...
Trying to oversimplify, but, yeah.
Yeah, we could probably break ground in 2028.
Several years from now.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
But my understanding is regardless of what the district decides, that Lake Grove will still be a school for that length of time anyway.
Councilor Raff, any questions? Okay, thank you, Ms. Bennett. Dr. Shealy.
Doesn't sound, oh, now it is.
There you are.
This is normally when I would sing a Little Mermaid song, but I'm going to not do that in such a professional space. So, it's a little bit nicer than what we're used to. Chair Buck, Board Chair Bills, members of the council, and our school board, I am going to go through our schedule, and I just pass it out so you can see it in front of you. Our long-range facility planning committee has been meeting since November of this last year, 2023. They are still meeting, so they'll meet all the way through June. Their job really is to assess our facility conditions, educational adequacy assessment, financial outlooks, and capital improvement program, and give feedback to the school board so they can make decisions. The target presentation for that is on May 20th, so in about two weeks. They will give a recommendation to the school board. That recommendation will go out in our board packet prior to the meeting, so anyone in the community can see what that recommendation is, and be prepared for the next step, which is them taking, the school board taking community input. We will be taking input on the May 20th meeting, the June 3rd meeting, and the June 17th meeting. And during those times, we will take all public comment, and if we need more public comment time, we will take more public, we will add another meeting. And they will review the possible recommendations. They may change them, they may tweak them. They will look at estimated costs, they will look at anticipated resources. That's, the school board will do all of that. And then they could turn around and say to me, I need you to do this, or I want you to study this further, and not actually adopt a recommendation at that time. So that even pushes it out even further. Over the summertime, we'll be taking action on anything they ask us to do as far as the staff goes. That could be, again, hiring additional people to study things, it could be asking additional information from community members. We will be moving forward with whatever they say during the summertime, but then we'll come back in September and October, review all the findings, administrative considerations, take public testimony again, and then we're going to finalize that long-range facility plan. And at that point, they are going to direct me to commence the bond development process. So next, we have a bond development committee, and that will meet from October 2024 to January 2025. They will develop the proposed bond measure based on the recommendations, updated the cost estimates, and they also do voter polling during that time. So, for example, they're going to talk to the community and find out what people will vote for and what they will not vote for, and that will help them determine what will be on the bond. We do have a notice of ballot title must be filed by February 28th of 2025 for this bond to be on the May 20th ballot, which is what our projection is at this time. So final dates are subject to Oregon's Secretary of State election calendar, but it's, and we usually find out that in June of this year. So we should know for next year at the end of June, by the end of June. Then LOSD will have their informational campaign from February 25 to May 25, which is when we give everyone in this community the information they need to know about what they're, what they're voting for. And then we also have that final election on May 20th. So we will have a public campaign about the proposed bond measures. So we do all of those things, and that's when then we ask this community to vote on the bond, which will have a few things involved in it. And some of the things that this committee has been talking about at the committee meetings have been cafeteriums at all of our elementary schools, additional high school spaces for CTE, putting some, Forest Hills would be rebuilt, and also some safety technology in all of our schools. So there's, those are some of the few things that they're talking about in a recommendation right now. But none of us will see that final recommendation until right before the 20th board meeting. And I'm happy to answer any questions, too.
Any questions for Dr. Shealy?
And explain the bond, that this is a renewal, not a new bond.
Correct. This is, if, if you remember, this is actually our third step in our bond process, and it is a renewal, so it is not a tax increase.
Could, Dr. Shealy, could, you know, to give us like just a brief, and maybe it's longer than brief, but as best you can, I think back over the years, you know, we started our community with a certain number of schools. And when I was first on the council, I remember we were doing our Parks and Rec meetings in Palisades, and we had kids running all over that place. Well, it was a school at first, and then it was kind of empty, then it was a parks facility, now it's a language academy. And, you know, when I was young, I went to kindergarten at Uplands, and then that school was empty for a while. So what has kind of taken the community from what seemed like some years of a consistent number of schools to then a period in the more recent future where things have been changing, you know?
Sure. So we have been using Uplands Elementary School for our rebuild. So in the last bond, when we, we built Lakewood Middle School, and now we just finished River Grove, we just had the ribbon cutting yesterday. It's a beautiful, very, very beautiful space for our students. All of those River Grove students have been at Uplands for the last two years. Next year, they will move back into their new school, and then we will have all the students from LOJ Middle School move into Uplands. They will be there for two years while we rebuild that school. After that, it really kind of depends on when the bond passes, because if the next thing happens, the bond passes, Forest Hills, students would go into Uplands for two more years. And at that time, depending on if we rebuild Lake Grove or remodel Lake Grove, or remodel or rebuild Uplands, then those students would stay in their own school, or we did that to Uplands, and then we would be all done. So it's, it's about seven years out before any of this will affect any, any students at any of the schools, actually.
And these other schools, you know, over time, did the schools population somewhat change over the years rather dramatically, or I mean?
Yeah, we actually have stayed pretty steady at about, between 68 and 7,000 students. We have seen a decrease at our elementary schools and an increase at our secondary schools. So we end up landing about the same number, but we have less students at elementary schools.
And, and the, the middle schools have, that used to be seventh and eighth, have become a sixth, seventh, and eighth?
Correct.
And that, has that been part of this kind of update to the, to the facilities?
Well, wow, when was that? That, when we closed the, the sixth graders, when we moved them up to middle school, is when we closed two schools and repurposed one school. And those schools, schools that got closed were Palisades, Uplands, and then Bryan got repurposed for the sixth graders to be part of Lakewood Middle School.
I see, I see. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. I know that we appreciate community members being here to listen to this conversation tonight, but I know some of them also have things they'd like to share. So if it's okay, we do some public comment. Is this okay? And so the public comment, when I call you to come forward, this is your first time, we welcome, welcome you here. You choose a seat at the table. We provide a little timer up there. You have three minutes for your comment. Appreciate you just being mindful of the timer, so I don't have to cut you off. We will start with Carl Okert. Please come forward.
Good evening, sir.
And just, when you start, please just say your name for the record.
Hello, everybody. My name's Carl Okert. I live at 910 Cumberland Road. Good evening. We've heard tonight from the library director how that facility space constraints, and it limits special events and classes from being held there. On a recent Saturday, LO Reads was staged at the library, and people were crammed in and spilling out the door. Meanwhile, one block north, about 500 feet away, the Adult Community Center, the ACC, stood empty. You see, it closes every day at 4:30, and it's closed all weekend. It's a big facility, and it's being horribly underutilized. The ACC has undergone a seismic upgrade, it's seismically sound, and a wonderful remodel. It's well-run, the staff are great. I host a weekly music group there called Slow Jam. The ACC is truly a city treasure. It's a wonderful place. The library presentation provided, and a quick bit of math, an estimate of about 45 people on average attending library events. The ACC's Oak Room comfortably seats at least 130 people. That's triple the amount of average attendance. They have additional class and meeting rooms, and a large parking lot for outdoor events. These spaces are way underutilized. We were told that the library regularly partners, partners with other public facilities for more space. That would be great. However, my research showed that the library has not conducted any musical or class events at the ACC since before COVID. And to be clear, the ACC is operated by the Parks Department. In a recent council work session, including the library and Parks Boards, the city council, the city council described the vision of both departments to collaborate and synergize. The library and Parks Departments should be able to synergize and efficiently use the existing city services and assets. Now is the time to show the community how well that kind of interdepartmental synergy can work by holding valuable programs that the community wants in an already existing, fully remodeled, state-of-the-art facility that is just a little more than a block away from the library and is woefully underutilized. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Mr. Okert.
Ruth, there are questions. Any questions?
Oh, there's no questions. Thank you, sir. Ruth Breaker.
Thanks, Ms. Slender. Good evening, ma'am.
Assume this is on?
Yes, yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Ruth Bruegar. I have lived in the Westridge neighborhood for 37 years. I'm currently the co-chair of the Westridge Board, but tonight, I'm speaking for myself. I want to speak about the prospect of shuttering Lake Grove Elementary School. The idea of relocating and busing students from Lake Grove to Uplands is a major concern to me and many of my Westridge neighbors. My point of view comes mainly from my 25 years of teaching at the elementary school level. One big advantage of living in Lake Oswego is the quality of our schools, which in no small part is enhanced by the neighborhood locations of its elementary schools. A neighborhood school is a community hub. It facilitates attending after-school activities such as kids' performances, music events, sports, parent-teacher conferences, and children just being able to play on the playground after school on weekends and during the summer. In fact, as far as I'm aware, this is the only playground in the area that is suitable for elementary-age students. The loss of Lake Grove School will change the complexion of the entire neighborhood. Many of the families that moved to the Lake Grove area moved there because the homes are more affordable and for the proximity to Lake Grove School. Closing Lake Grove will also have a ripple effect throughout Lake Oswego. There'll be a shift in student population among several of the area's schools to balance the student numbers, and it will almost certainly require even more bussing. How ironic that the school district is promoting a walk or ride your bike to school on May 10th. If the Lake Grove students are bused to Uplands, in the future, they can say goodbye to that tradition. If you put the two choices on a scale, a community center or an excellent school with one of the largest enrollments of any elementary school in the city, there isn't a whisper of a doubt that the scale will tip heavily in favor of keeping Lake Grove Elementary School right where it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bruegar.
My name is Thomas Eldridge. Mayor, City Council, thank you for your time. The Lake Grove Elementary School District has the second-highest minority enrollment rate in the city of Lake Oswego. Their minority enrollment rate is 50% higher than that of Westridge Elementary School. The Lake Grove Elementary School District serves the highest population of renters in the city of Lake Oswego. The Lake Grove Elementary School District serves the second-lowest average-medium-income population in the city of Lake Oswego, a staggering 22% lower than Westridge, 18% lower than Forest Hills, and 10% lower than River Grove, which is a huge disparity gap. I'm here today to ask the mayor and city council to advise the Lake Oswego School Board's Long Range Facilities Plan Committee to trash the idea of flattening the Lake Grove Elementary School, which would generate capital to be spent in high-net worth and predominantly white school districts. Portland State's University Community Planning and Ethics graduate class are licking their lips at the prospect of studying this idea and writing dissertations about how, about how even in one of the wealthiest cities in the state of Oregon, if you are classified as a renter, minority, or low-income household, you will be left behind. The elected officials in this room and the Lake Oswego School Board members will find their names tarnished in papers which will investigate the harmful impacts of negligent planning and community policy which stems from a history of systematic racism. There are two affordable housing developments being built in the Lake Grove Elementary School District, one by my friends at Hacienda CDC, and one by Habitat for Humanity. Demolishing the local elementary school, which would serve these low-income families, is a slap in the face to these local nonprofit partners, and will send a message to the affordable housing development community that Lake Oswego, to the housing development community which includes Oregon's Housing and Community Services, that Lake Oswego is not serious about affordable housing. I work in real estate development, and I'm aware of the amount of resources which go into conceptualizing an idea of this magnitude. I strongly recommend the mayor and city council advise the Lake Oswego School Board to cease wasting resources on this plan before it snowballs into a racial, social, and classism issue, which will be discussed in classrooms across our nation in years to come. I hope the next time I am here, I'm commending you as public servants for everyone in Lake Oswego, and for your efforts in resolving this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eldridge. Laurel, Laurel Maher. Laurel, are you here? Oh, excuse me. Hi, Ms. Maher.
Sorry. My name's Laurel Maher, and I live on Carmen Drive. I've lived in Lake Grove since 1955. I went to Lake Grove Elementary, as did my two sons and my granddaughter. I've seen so many changes in Lake Grove over the decades I've lived here, but Lake Grove Elementary has been a constant central hub for our neighborhood community. The Lake Grove Village Center Plan adopted in, to the Lake Oswego City Comprehensive Plan states that our school is central to the long-term vision for Lake Grove. Lake Grove Elementary is referenced 14 times in the city document and has been the hub and anchor of our community since 1924. I wasn't alive then. It is my understanding that Lake Grove Elementary has the second-highest population of all the district's schools and is projected to have the highest enrollment in the district by 2030. Lake Grove Elementary is not a declining school. Do not eliminate Lake Grove Elementary. Do not sell or lease the property to some developer. We already have a community center. It's Lake Grove Elementary. Please keep our community whole. Save Lake Grove Elementary.
Thank you, Ms. Maher.
Good evening, sir. And Casey Carpenter. I'm a parent, I'm a resident of Lake Grove, right across the street from the church, the original pastor's house. My background is that I actually spent my career working with smart communities and initiatives around the country and around the world. I'm retired now. I'm an author, I'm a writer, I'm an organizer, I'm a parent. And every single day, I see all these people walking in the community. It's the most walkable community in, in Lake Grove, and that's because a lot of focus was spent on really the transformation. Can't tell how many strollers and babies I see in my neighborhood. There's so many houses going in. It's booming. So I'm going to tell you a story. At this point, we've raised four grown adult children. My son, though, had learning difficulties, learning differences when he was a child. He couldn't read. Friday, he graduates from law school. Why? He was in an elementary school, was being threatened to shut down. We saved it. It was his teachers and the programs in the elementary school that made the difference. My daughter's a doctor. Our son is coming home to live with us. It's possible we may have grandkids who want to go to Lake Grove. So I really think it's critically important to really understand the long-term needs of the community and not some short-term financial opportunity. I understand... I understand that there's some economic justification for selling things in this community, but Lake Oswego is precious. It's renowned not only across Oregon but across the country, primarily not just for its lake and its forests, but for the quality of its education. Putting kids on a bus, have you gone down to the summer Lake Grove where all these families are? Even that's a challenge to get across the street. We do not need to eliminate elementary schools. There are resources available for community centers, for libraries, public sector, and private partnerships could be extremely innovative here. Let's not shut down this school that is really an opportunity for diversity and growth in our community. Again, the story of my life has been, and today it's Teacher Appreciation Day. I wish there were teachers here, right? Kids need to be together in elementary schools with teachers, not on buses and traffic jams. Thank you so much for your time, and I really look forward to covering this in my writing over the next weeks and months, and hopefully we'll get this, we'll get some solutions.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Carpenter.
Thank you.
Lindsey Boshia.
Good evening.
Hi. I usually come to these meetings a little bit more prepared, but I wasn't sure what was going to be said, so I'm kind of reading off my phone tonight. So you see a lot of people in the room behind us here because it impacts a lot of people. So you're going to be getting a lot of information from us, so this isn't by any means like everything. You're going to get a full research packet from our team of volunteers who's looking at a variety of things, honestly, things that probably should have been inserted into this process between your two teams at this point. It's inconvenient, right, when you have a really great idea, but there's things that kind of stand in the way of it. In corporations, you know, sometimes you can kind of push those things through, right? Because you've got a CEO and, you know, you kind of all fall in line. What I'm seeing here, you know, you're doing a really great job selling the vision of this, but it's somewhat at the level of what I would see, you know, in my workplace. But we're not at the workplace. When we talk about how we give feedback and kind of how we want to communicate, that's probably what I'm going to focus on here. You're going to see a lot of facts from me probably in the next couple of weeks in your inbox on all the reasons why this doesn't make sense for our kids. But how we give feedback, I want to talk about describing public feedback as emotional, especially for the women that are on this panel. There's a variety of research papers and people who have dedicated their thesis projects on calling arguments emotional because it immediately discredits what comes next. So I would just caution you and just ask you to please be cognizant, to listen to what we have to say in the next couple of weeks, couple of months, or however long this drags on, and to not call what we say emotional comments from the community. We're going to be delivering a lot of fact-based information. This decision goes against a lot of things, and you have to be both prepared that this decision will go against the comprehensive plan, it'll go against the Lake Grove Village Center Plan, it'll go against a lot of the EPA recommendations for what is safe for children in schools in regards to lead and asbestos. This has a lot to do with sustainability and walkability, and Lake Grove is categorically your most walkable school location in the entire city of Lake Oswego. That's fact-based. The EPA bought out WalkScore.com, and they merged it with a bunch of sustainability metrics. Kids at Lake Grove, it's the most optimally-placed school, and I will send you all these links. Go to the EPA Smart Siting Tool. They tell you where to place a building to optimally affect everybody around it. Lake Grove scores a 70, Upland scores a 22. That's one of probably 10 things that you guys are going to receive that you're going to be like, wow, I really wish we would have looked at this closer. 2.5 acres of the deed also for the school district says it's for school purposes.
Thank you, Ms. Boshia. I'm sorry to interrupt you. It's your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here. Everyone, community members, thank you very much for your comments. School Board members and Dr. Shealy, thank you all for being here tonight to engage. Thank you, everyone, for hearing this presentation. We're going to take a recess and rearrange the chairs and then continue with the rest of our city council meeting. Thank you all.
So sushi. Sushi time.[906.13]
Okay, we're back in order. We're going to continue with public comment, Betsy. And thank you for waiting. You're the only one that wasn't school related, so thanks for your patience.
Oh, thank you, Mayor Buck. Good afternoon, Betsy Wasco, 320 Durham Street. I'm speaking, I'm Chair of Old Town Neighbor Association, and I'm speaking in behalf of Old Town and also in behalf of myself individually. I'd like to ask this council to please ban gas powered leaf blowers. Gas blowers cause or contribute to causation of hearing loss, cancer, and cardiovascular and neurological disease. They desiccate the soil, killing microorganisms. They are harmful to people, animals, birds, and insects. The city has indicated it was waiting for the State or possibly the City of Portland Act. On March 13, 2024, the Portland City Council by unanimous vote enacted a phase out ban. That Portland is the second largest city after Washington DC to do so, joining more than 170 other towns and cities who have banned them. I'm going to read some findings, Section 1, Paragraph 4 of its ordinance. Quote, "Studies from the EPA indicate gasoline leaf blowers produce toxic and carcinogenic exhaust emissions that include volatile organic compounds, carbon monoxide, nitrogen oxides, and particulate matter, and can pose health risks to the operators and public, including cardiovascular disease, stroke, respiratory disease, cancer, neurological conditions, premature death, and effects on prenatal development." One of the arguments the city has used opposing a ban in the past has been that it would be financially harmful to small landscaping businesses. This fiscal argument respectfully fails because it does not consider other and greater costs, namely the costs of medical treatment and wage loss associated with serious illness. Diversity, equity, and inclusivity arguments weigh strongly in favor of a ban, allowing people to pay landscapers, many of whom are minority or economically disadvantaged, to self inflict hearing loss, hypertension, cancer, and respiratory ailments is wholly inconsistent with DEI principles. Also, DEI should be expanded to include non-human species. We share this one world, this one precious environment, with other sentient species with whom we are interdependent. We should not oppress them with noise and air pollution. We need a paradigmatic shift in how we regard and treat our non-human brethren, and banning blowers is or should be an easy place to start. The change to a world free of gas blowers is already well underway, so why impose an ordinance, you may ask? Because every day they are used, people, both operators and residents, are developing or are at risk of developing hearing loss, cancer, cardiovascular disease, and respiratory illness. The insects, birds, animals, and microorganisms have it even worse. If it is an inevitability, as I believe it is, that these diabolical contraptions will soon be relegated to the scrap heap of history, why not take the lead, ban them now, and do even better than the City of Portland by making that ban immediate and comprehensive?
Thank you, Ms. Wasco, and thank you for continuing to send good articles and everything on this topic, too. We appreciate it. Thank you very much for your comments. Thank you.
Okay.
It was, yes.
What's that?
You were exactly at three minutes. You did a great job. You make me, in elementary school, at Our Lady of the Lake, we'd sit there and we would pick the, you know, in the grass as kids, and you'd pick the grass, and there was this nun, Sister Christine, and she would chastise us for picking the grass because it too was God's child. So I really made me, your comments made me think of that. Is there anyone else who would like to provide any public comment? Okay. Okay, we're now going to move on to the consent agenda. We have Item 7.1, which is a Public Improvement Contract Award for Construction of Work Order 348, and that is the 2024 Pavement Rehabilitation Program. We have Item 7.2, which is Resolution 2420. It's the resolution of the City Council amending Resolution 2402, which authorizes authorized an intergovernmental agreement with the Riverdale Rural Fire Protection District, providing for the continuation of fire and emergency medical services for fiscal years 24 through 25, 20, or excuse me, fiscal years 2425 through 203031. And Item 7.3, Resolution 2421, a resolution of the City Council authorizing the mayor to execute Amendment Number 1 to sub-recipient Agreement 24-006 between the City and Clackamas County Human Services Department's Social Services Division for fiscal years 24 through 27. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Move to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, second from Counselor Corgan. All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes 7-0. Next on the agenda is a public hearing on Ordinance 2945. This is an ordinance of the City Council amending LOC Chapter 24 to add Article 24.10, providing for a property tax exemption program for nonprofit corporation low income housing pursuant to ORS 307.540-548, and renaming Chapter 24. Attorney Osnak, will you please start by reading the hearing procedures for us?
Thank you, Mayor Buck. Members of the council, Ordinance 2945 is a legislative decision, which means it's generally a policy decision within your sound discretion. The public hearing process will begin with a presentation by staff who's on Zoom. Testimony will then be received from the public. Individuals are allowed up to five minutes. Recognized neighbor associations, homeowner associations, government agencies, or other incorporated public interest organizations will be allowed up to 10 minutes. The time limit shall not include time taken up by questions from the council or responses to such questions. Any person in attendance may cede his or her time for testimony to another person, but in no case shall any person's testimony be increased to greater than 10 minutes. At this time, I'll ask councilors if there are any financial conflicts of interest, reminding you that ex-party contacts and site visits do not need to be declared for legislative hearings. So are there any financial conflicts of interest? You can indicate by raising your hand. If you don't, then I will assume there are not. Seeing none, we're ready for the staff report.
Okay, and we have Director Newmanlu joining us via Zoom. Director Newmanlu, good evening.
Thank you, Mayor. My apologies, I can't be there this evening, but good evening to you all. And this hearing tonight is on Ordinance 2945, which would establish a tax exemption for nonprofit organizations that create affordable housing. And the affordability would be defined as housing that is at or below 60% of area median income. It would apply to taxes levied by the city only. However, there is an option in the ordinance, which is also allowed by the ORS, to apply to other taxing districts if there is a request to do so. The tax exemption would be required to be renewed annually by the applicant. At your April 2 city council meeting, you had a joint study session with the Planning Commission, and it was to provide direction to staff on strategies that will be included in the Housing Production Strategies Report, which will come before the council in a few months here in July. And during that, or the nonprofit, excuse me, the nonprofit Affordable Housing Tax Exemption was included as one of the strategies that you both discussed, and both the Planning Commission and the City Council did support, including this tax exemption in the HPS, the upcoming HPS report. I would also note that since we began the review of the Housing Production Strategies, which began after completion of the Housing Needs Analysis was adopted, there has been broad support from, at meetings of the City Council, the Planning Commission, as well as the Housing Production Strategy Task Force for this, for this tax exemption strategy. I know you, I know you're aware that Mercy Housing Northwest submitted a letter in October 2023 urging the city to adopt the exemption before the Housing Production Strategy is adopted later this year. And they also made that request at the April, at your April 2 meeting last month. And they noted in that letter that adopting the tax exemption before the summer, instead of waiting until after the Housing Production Strategy is adopted, would allow them to underwrite the exemption when they move from the construction loan to a permanent loan. And they estimate that this will save them over a million dollars over the life of the loan, which is much needed funding that they can use for maintenance costs, unexpected costs, and programs for them, their project at Mercy Green Bray, which is at Merrill Hars Commons, which is almost complete. And although it would benefit them by, by being adopted early, I will note that this tax exemption is available to any nonprofit corporation that creates affordable housing that meets the eligibility criteria, which could include the Hacienda Project, Affordable Housing Project on Boon's Ferry Road. The ordinance, which is included in your packet, establishes the criteria and eligibility requirements, as well as the application and renewal process for the tax exemption. And if it is approved by the council tonight, the next step would be to process the Mercy Housing Northwest application for the tax exemption, which we consider to be applied for back in October. Their letter has, meets the criteria for an application. So they would meet the deadlines that were established by this ordinance. And then we would come back to the council in June with findings on how they meet the tax exemption criteria. And then the City Council would, if they approve it, approve a resolution, and that would serve as certification to the county assessor of the tax exemption by the city. And in order for this to be adopted, or excuse me, in order this to be effective for the next upcoming tax year, this would need to be done before July 1, and we do have time to make that happen. So that is my presentation. I'm going to keep it short, but as always, happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Director. I just have a couple questions. The, so the tax exemption is eligible to developments, offering housing that's affordable to folks making 60% of area median income or less. Now, does it have to be for the entire development, or if they had a portion, you know, 60% less than a portion that was above 60? Is there some kind of, does this allow for some partial abatement?
It does. Well, no, it would allow, they could maintain the entire abatement because the way that we've defined affordability, the 60% AMI in the ordinance, it allows properties to actually float up, or not properties, but it allows certain residents to float up to 80% of the AMI by using income averaging. So that would mean that if they had some that were up at 80%, then they would have to have more deeply affordable at, say, 30 to 50% to offset. So it's more of an averaging approach.
Okay, I see. Okay. And it mentions that, just in the, in the narrative, let me find it here, in the narrative, said properties that are held for the purpose of developing low income rental housing.
Right.
So, so they could apply and receive the exemption before they actually have saleable units?
That is my understanding. I think it allows up to two years prior, so that it can, they can apply while it's under construction.
Okay. And if, for whatever reason, they abandon the project, or then they would owe the back taxes?
That is a good question. I would assume so, but I can't say that for sure off the top of my head. And I don't want to put Ellen, or, excuse me, Attorney Osnak on the, on the spot, but.
Would that be in the, in the ordinance itself? Or the state?
Yeah.
Or the state rules?
Yeah, there is a, it says, "If after the exemption is granted, the property is being used for any purpose inconsistent with the council's determination granting the exemption, the city manager shall follow the procedures for termination set forth in the ORS."
Okay.
So if they didn't use it for its purpose, or they didn't complete it in that time, I think we can, there is a termination clause here in the ordinance.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Colleagues, any questions? Okay, okay, thank you, Director. As we'll open the, the public hearing here, and I'll ask if there's, I don't have anyone, is there anyone here who'd like to provide testimony? Okay, seeing no one, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing, and we'll entertain a motion on Ordinance 2945.
Go ahead.
Anyone? Anyone?
Move to enact Ordinance 2945.
Second.
Wonderful. All right. Any discussion? No? Okay. And all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes 7-0. Director Newmanlu, thank you very much for being here. We appreciate it. And thank you for advancing this forward, too. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bennett, too. Okay. Okay, next item on the agenda, Item 9.2. This is Resolution, well, it's two resolutions together. This is Resolution 2419 and 2418. This is a public hearing. This is a resolution of the City Council acting as the Lake Oswego Public Contracting Review Board pursuant to ORS 279A.060, making certain findings and approving an amendment to Resolution 18-55, and authorizing a special procurement to enter into a design, build, operate, and maintain contract for the new wastewater treatment plant facility. And also, the second resolution, 2418, this is a resolution of the City Council acting as the Lake Oswego Public Contracting Review Board pursuant to ORS 279A.060, making certain findings and approving a special procurement for owner's advisor services for the wastewater treatment plant facility, the DBOM phase, and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Corolo Engineering. Before we begin, we'll ask Ms. Osnak to again read the hearing procedures for us.
Thank you, Mayor Buck. Members of the council, Resolutions 2419 and 2418 are public contracting policy decisions. Again, these are within the sound discretion of your, of the City Council. And although your policy decision is discretionary, it must also comply with state contracting laws, specifically ORS 279A.055, as well as the state administrative rules that govern contracting. And again, specifically, those are 137-049-620-630. And specific to this, these particular items, there are administrative rules specific to a designed build, which is OAR 1370490670, specific to a request for production, I mean, request for proposals that were, that you're considering today, which is O650 and O660, as well as general contracting, which is 0690. So this combined public hearing process is going to begin with a presentation by staff. Testimony will be received from the public pursuant to the procedures outlined in the agenda, which are that individuals will have five minutes, 10 minutes for representatives of recognized neighbor associations, homeowner associations, government agencies, or other incorporated public interest organizations, with questions from council not included in those time limits. At this point, I'll ask, as I did earlier, if there are any financial conflicts of interest, reminding you that for legislative policy decisions, ex-party contact and site visits do not need to be declared. Seeing no conflicts of interest, we're ready for the staff report.
Okay, we have Stefan Broaddus, our Director of Special Projects, and on Zoom, Kyle Ror of Corolo Engineering. Yes?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Buck and councilors. Thank you for having me. As the mayor mentioned, my name is Stefan Broaddus. I am the Director of Special Projects. And tonight, I'm going to give an update on our wastewater treatment facility project, specifically on a pair of special procurements. So here's the agenda for tonight. I'm going to start by giving a brief background of the project history. I'm then going to walk through the procurement method evaluation as directed by council at our last meeting. That will lead into the actual overview of that resolution. I'm then going to pause a moment for questions. This will also give us an opportunity to excuse Kyle Ror from Corolo as we then move into the next step to talk about a special procurement for the owner's advisor services. And then to wrap up the presentation, I will then go over a timeline for the next steps of the project, as well as recap the recommendations for these special procurements. Quick background of how we got here today. In early 2018, the City of Lake Oswego and Portland began exploring a DBFOM. So that's a design, build, finance, operate, and maintain model, which is also sometimes referred to as a P3, a public-private partnership, on the wastewater treatment facility. I was going for the record for most acronyms in one part of the slide. I may have got it, not sure. About a year later, we got the, that procurement, that DBFOM, request for qualifications was released. That is the first step of a two-step process, the second step being a request for proposals. The request for qualifications was released, proposers submitted on that. The top proposers were shortlisted, and then those shortlisted proposers were then allowed to provide a proposal. So then moving forward, in 2021, after that procurement, and then the subsequent negotiations were completed, the agreement was executed with our partner, which was Epcore, to take the design to a 60% level of completion. In spring of 20,000, I'm sorry, 2023, extended that agreement from 60% to 90%. And then in early 2024, that scope of work was completed and delivered to the city. At that same meeting, council directed staff to explore competitive procurement methods to deliver the remainder of the project. And I am back here today to talk about recommendations for how to complete that next procurement. From that direction from the council, the project team began exploring the competitive methods that were available to us to finish this project. And the three main ways to deliver it, ranging from all encompass, all-encompassing, very comprehensive, as shown on the left, design, build, operate, maintain model, to a very distinct segmented contracting approach would be the design, bid, build method. And so, like I said, the one end of the spectrum, that design, build, operate, maintain model, that's one contract that we would develop with a partner, maybe one large entity or a team of several firms, to provide essentially everything remaining for this project. So as the name implies, they would finish the design, they would construct the facility, and then enter into a long-term operations and maintenance period. The other end of that spectrum is the design, bid, build model. And so in that, we would draft up and execute a contract for each of the remaining phases. So we would seek proposals to finish the design, take that finished work product, then bid out the construction, take that completed construction project, and then seek out means to operate it. So you'll notice on here, the design, build model, as well as the design, bid, build model, include an option on, on how to operate the facility. You could either operate it with contract operations, or it could be done in-house. So while these are an option, and were an option on the original procurement, staff is not recommending that approach. The city is not really well positioned to build an entirely new department, staff it up, and then manage the volatilities in the market right now with labor. and then manage the volatilities in the market right now with labor, materials, equipment, all of those things. So for that reason, and for the same reasons that in-house operations was not chosen for the original procurement, we're not recommending it here, and I'm going to remove that from the future discussion, just to kind of simplify things moving forward. So taking that out, we're left with just three options: design, build, operate, maintain, design, build, design, bid, build. And so the project team compared these three models across several criteria. So there's schedule, risk, cost, construction review, and operations review. What I mean by construction review is how much of that construction lens, construction perspective, constructability, however you want to call it, how much of that element is available to the design team while the design is being made? It's, it's a huge advantage of the, the two models on the left-hand side, design, build, operate, maintain, design, build method, in which the construction team is, is a part of the team as they finish the design. And that, you know, what is possible, what is efficient and effective from a construction perspective, is part of those design decisions instead of those decisions being made by professional staff, in a sense. And in the same, the design, build, operate, maintain has a significant advantage over the other two from that operations perspective in that that group of people is a part of the team. So processes that will need to be done day in, day out, for the decades that this facility is in place, those processes will get to be evaluated and improved and modified as needed by the operations team that will be performing those tasks at the time of design and during construction to ensure that they're inheriting a product that they can efficiently and effectively operate. Whereas the other two models simply don't have that perspective with them. So with that, the project team is recommending the design, build, operate, maintain model. And, and maybe in a simpler way than the table showed, the, the reasons that we're recommending that model are really the same reasons that the design, build, finance, operate, maintain model was recommended previously. All of those same advantages are present in the DBOM model, minus the one element that caused the project to stall, which was the private equity model. So this DBOM model takes what was working previously, was very successful and was headed in a positive direction, and removes that one component that was problematic. So I do want to take a moment to note that any of these models, including the one that we're recommending, design, build, operate, maintain, will be identifying the work that was completed so far to date as the preferred design option. What that means is when we, when we put out a request for qualifications and then further a request for proposals, vendors will be able to pick up the work product that was completed and then continue that to deliver the project. Or they can provide an alternative design such that it meets the design criteria that was established. But in order to do so, they would have to meet that design criteria, and it would have to be at a better cost to the city, better value to the city than the design that we already have established. I wanted to put that out there. And then I wanted to open it up for any questions for this next procurement that we're looking at.
Thank you, Director. Yes, we'll start with Councilor after then. Okay. You got it first, man. Okay. So pardon me for being super gun-shy about us moving forward after the previous, you know, situation we were in. I thought you were being very nice to our previous partner by saying it was a private equity that was problematic, when I would say it was just we were working with a partner that I didn't feel was partnering in, in good spirits with the, with the city. I think they were, they saw it more as a, a chest full of cash. And so part of what my, my comment next is really rooted in is just my conservativeness around how we move forward in protecting ourselves and, and our fiduciary responsibility as, as legislators, I guess. I guess you could say that, sort of. And so what I would like to see, I kind of like the idea of moving forward, assuming that the city will operate and maintain the facility. I said this maybe a year ago when we were working with the previous partner, that I thought there was too much risk by having the third party doing everything. I think that opened us up as a city for a lot of risk that we didn't necessarily need to manage if we just, you know, dedicate our own resources to it. It's our, it's our facility, et cetera. So I would like to see us think about or consider, thinking about this engagement in phases. And I know we are, but phases in terms of, let's work down the design-build aspect of it. And then if, if through that process, there's trust, there's equity in the relationship, the partners prove that they are good partners and not seeing this as just a blank checkbook, then we can then consider the operating and maintaining element of the relationship. I think the operation and maintaining element of this project is, has significant value for a partner. And so I feel that if that is part of the arrangement, then we should see significant savings at the, at, you know, over the course of the, of this arrangement, because that is such, so valuable for, for a third party. So I'd like to hold, have us hold that back to make sure we're working with the right partner. So it's comment only, not necessarily a question, just more of a, more of a thought.
Well, this might be a question, though, for the attorneys rather than for Stefan, is could we write a, I, I don't think you, you can't, I don't think you can bid it the way you're suggesting. I think you have to bid it as a DBOM, but could you write in the,
Off-ramps.
Could you write off-ramps in the preliminary services agreement if you didn't feel confident in your operating partner? And I would guess.
Off-ramps in the, in the previous one, and, but I think, yes, there's, there could be a creative way to do it.
We didn't have off-ramps from the perspective of, hey, later if we decide we don't like your operator, then we, because actually when we were contracting with Epcore, part of why we contracted with them is because of their operating expertise. And some of it is going to depend on how the bids come in. Some of the firms that are going to come in are going to bid it in a way where the operator is not the same as the designer, but some of them are going to bid it as a single entity. And so I think, like I said, I think this is a question for the attorneys, is do we think there's a way to build it? So if we got to the place where we didn't trust one piece, that we could then reevaluate it?
Yeah.
I don't know.
I think, I think that's totally reasonable.
You don't need to answer the question on the fly, but as opposed to thinking about it as, let's do this design, build, and then decide later, I would say, let's go out as a DBOM, but design in.
I think that's, both of our intentions is exactly the same. I think that's great. And, and I think the, the root of this is, if I'm the third party, I, the value to me is running this thing for the next 40 years and that, on that annuity.
But you know, it might not be the same company. And that's the thing, is they're going to bid, some folks are going to bid it as a single entity, and some folks are going to build it, bid it as a, as a series of companies. And this might actually be a Kyle question, too. I wish Jill were here. This would be a great Jill question.
I'm just glad we're having this conversation now before we get down the road, so that all these things we can put out there and like, what's our ideal?
It is a lot of trust to put into an entity we're not going to know much about at the get-go and, you know.
But I do think to Stefan's point, when you have the operational company at the table, as you're designing, you design in operational efficiencies. And so there's a significant advantage to us to do that.
I think there's, there's, there's pass for both, but I think we need to protect ourselves significantly with whatever partner we go forward with, because none of us can go through that again.
Well, at this point, the design part is,
Is ninety percent.
Pretty de minimis, right?
That's part of my question, yeah. Yeah. That's part of my questions. I don't know if I can.
That's the counselor's book, yes.
Yeah, no, that's because we are ninety percent. So should we remove D and just say build, operate, and manage?
Well, we need the ten percent.
Yeah. The ten, no, yeah, the ten percent. Like, it's, that's why it's kind of, for me as a layperson on this, like, we have ninety percent design and we are giving it to the company that, if I were them, I would say, I'm not taking this design. I'm designing myself the thing I want to build. Epcore may be different from the person, the people we are going to hire. And so what, and I'm, I'm glad you said that, those people will not go higher than we already paid, that the ninety percent will be taken into account, is what you say.
So.
In terms of cost.
The, so the proposing teams would have the option. They can say, here's a ninety percent set of plans. At the end of the day, they will need to, to take ownership of the plans, because they will need to be the engineer of record on that. Okay, so there will most likely be some effort in taking ownership of that, and then they can, they can take ownership of it and then move it to a hundred percent, and then proceed with construction. The other route would be is if a vendor said, these plans are ninety percent and they're great, but we are going to do our own thing and our, our present, our proposal is based on taking a slightly different direction. The city can evaluate either one of those proposals with, and we could do that, because we, in the procurement document, we would specify the criteria that they would need to meet in order to deliver a successful facility. And so long as they were able to meet all that criteria, then we can compare two different designs, essentially apples to apples, and make a selection based on what's best for the city. To the question as to if we can break this up, it probably is a good question for Kyle to chime in on this, but I'll just say that, you know, there, there's a risk-cost relationship. And so when we, I, someone once said, I think I may be quoting Kyle here, but I can't remember, is, no one takes on additional risk. You buy risk, right? And so by, by building in more flexibility for the city, by saying that, okay, instead of a traditional design, build, operate, maintain contract, we want to build in an opportunity for at the end of construction, we could sever ties at that point. You could have entities that are interested in that, but the entities are going to cost it as such. Because as you said, the, the bulk of the financial incentive for a company to do this project is the operations piece. It's, it's more than half of the value of this project. So if we're, if we are either taking, taking that away from a firm or, or building into the contract the ability to take it away, and maybe there's ways that we can write that, but, but even introducing that idea, the, the proposers are going to have to offset that with their own means.
I agree. And it goes the other way, too, right? So if we want to allow them to operate, then we should see significant savings going our way. So for example, when I was doing tennis contracts at Nike, the agent would come to us like, hey, if, if Roger Federer won Wimbledon, then he gets a $3 million bonus, quote unquote. We would then in return say, well, if he doesn't win Wimbledon, then what do we get in return? So with every risk, there's upside for the other party. And with every upside with one party, there's risk for the others. So that's my point.
And Stefan, have, have we, have we ever operated with a P3? Do we have a project standing or in the past with P3?
City of Lake Oswego? Not that I'm aware of, but it, there's several in the industry that have been completed.
Which?
Yes, Wilsonville is a peer agency.
No, our, no, because me personally, I am against P3. Like, you know, I have my reason. I've always developed it. P3 does not work for me. We should develop our own workforce to do our things and operate them. These are venture capitalists. They're not coming as friends or, they don't come as, you know, they're not doing charity work, which is normal. Their businesses do things. We should be in a position where we develop our own stuff and earn it. That's what I believe. So, but since this is not possible, obviously, that's what we're doing. Like, that's your advice, so I think we have to avoid what happened with Epcore going forward. Like doubling every time, changing the numbers, coming because of the weather has changed. Okay, the thing is five percent more than, you should have solid people with solid contract that say, this is what we're doing. This is, you know, I'm, I know I'm not teaching you your job. You know better than I do in these things, but.
A lot of these changes, I do think with, with Epcore, were around the financing piece, and now we've carved that out, which is, you know.
But thank you, you know, it was very clear, your stuff.
Yeah. Counselor Wimble.
Couple of questions. And maybe Kyle can answer this. Is this situation very typical of what we're in? I mean, is the industry going to respond with great assurances that they've done this before? They've been in situations that they know what they're getting into? Is this fairly typical situation?
Is that for Kyle?
Yeah.
Yes. Hello, Mayor Buck and members of City Council, Kyle Ror, Corolo Engineers. Nice to be with you. Lot, lot to digest, lot of good discussion, lot of good questions. The, the industry right now, if we're talking about the design, build, operate, maintain path that Stefan presented, yes, the industry is poised for this model. It's what they're familiar with. Generally, kind of getting to one of the other questions that came up. Generally, when you're looking at a DBOM, because of, and Stefan articulated this quite well, you know, these entities, whether it's a single firm or a consortium, are looking at the O&amp;M as the primary, quite frankly, you know, revenue generating objective for the consortium. As such, DBO teams, DBOM teams are going to be generally led by the operations arm of either the company or of the consortium. So while an off-ramp, again, I defer to the attorneys on this, but while an off-ramp in the procurement or the contract is completely feasible, where you can decide if you want to do the O&amp;M, your, your efficiencies are going to come from an operations-led DBO team that fully expects to run the facility for 30 years. And that would also dovetail into other efficiencies where the operator will have input into completion of the design, the construction, the phasing of the construction. It's an entirely different model in terms of efficiency from a life cycle, life cycle perspective. That said, there's no reason that we couldn't craft contractual and procurement documents in a way that addresses the concerns expressed. But the much short answer to your question is, yes, the DBO market out there is expecting and used to something akin to what Stefan presented.
Right. I guess my question specifically to our project, we're ninety percent done in design, is does the market pick up projects that are, and, and we have the Aqua Navita technology, so, or is that, did I pronounce it right?
Yeah. No, it, it isn't neutral. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Well, I mean, is that, I, you know, if they don't operate with that or they don't want to, then they're going to go back and redo things and so on. And so I guess I'm, I'm trying to figure out, you know, are we in a, such a unique position that we have a ninety percent design and nobody's, nobody's going to touch somebody else's product? Or is this typical that somebody would, if it's an operations-oriented firm, they would look at the plan and say, hey, they did a really good job. Let's pick it up from here and do the extra 10%? Or are we going to get charged basically in our price a hundred percent of new design, even though they say they're going to pick up the, the, you know? And will we have the same basic footprint, technology, everything kind of that we've been hoping for? So that, A, it's covered, it doesn't smell, it works great, it's energy efficient. We have all the, the, sort of the bells and whistles of, of a top-performing sewer treatment plant. So either one of you.
I think, you know, what you just named is, is a great example of the qualitative performance criteria that we would put into the procurement document. So like I mentioned before, we build in some flexibility so that we would have a preferred design. We would enable vendors to provide proposals of alternate designs, but they would have to meet smell criteria, odor criteria, they would have to fit on the same footprint. They would have, there can be an energy component there for sustainability. There can be all sorts of parameters that we put in place that say, yes, you can do something different, such as long as it performs at or better than this level. that say, yes, you can do something different, such as long as it performs at or better than this level.
And is there, which is great because we can all say that, you know, we want everyone to go the speed limit. That's not going to happen, but will something like, I mean, is it typical in the industry that they could pick up a project like this and deliver? I guess it's my question. Are we at a disadvantage right now?
I mean, I I can chime in. The answer is yes, it is unusual. Generally, D B Os are greenfield projects where from day one, your designer, your contractor and your operator are sitting around a table before any design is ever made. This is definitely unusual, but it's not so unusual that the market would not be interested in it. These operations firms are used to our operations led teams are used to operating all kinds of technologies that the bigger the bigger question or the or the what we are focused on right now is to what degree is the new engineering firm going to take responsibility as a designer of record for the advanced Aqua Nevada technology? And I think I've said the last time I was in front of you that we would expect a little bit of what I'm calling unwinding of the design for the new engineer to be comfortable with it. But Corolo and others believe that the design, even though Aqua Nevada is kind of new. It's very good. It's appropriate for this application and we're confident internally and based on preliminary market soundings with the teams that are forming out there that that the that the design itself will be utilized and advanced and and operated. We, you know, I I can't guarantee we're going to get five, ten proposals on it. But I do know that the market out there is not shying away from the model that Stefan is presenting.
Okay, so we don't, we won't be a unicorn per se in the sense that we're so unusual that people are going to go, ooh, because what I'm worried about that is they're going to say, hey, let's add another twenty five percent onto the cost because of as
Right.
As you said before, when you take on a project, you have to accept their the risk.
Right, and 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 you're asking the right question, you know, and the the answer is yes and no. Yes, you are a bit of a unicorn. But no, I mean, based based on what we have seen thus far and based on our comfort with what was proposed in the original Epcor approach. We don't have. We're not overly concerned that we won't have a market that's interested in this. And just and just as as an aside, as part of the first step of the solicitation, the request for qualifications. It's a very, it's a relatively light touch. It's a it's a relatively low bar in terms of submittal requirements for the teams to prepare a response. We're going to do formal market sounding prior to issuing that R F Q to vet the informal market sounding that we at Corolo have had with these firms and really make sure that, hey, we have two, three, four firms or consortia that are willing to embrace this. You know, you're you're absolutely asking the right question, you know, there there will likely be some unwinding of the design that you would, you know, you'll need to pay for in the design build price, but again, we're pretty comfortable with what you have and the applicability and suitability for that site.
Okay, thank you.
How how much can I related question? How much can we unwind and still stick with Aqua Nevada?
Well, Aqua Nevada process is the backbone of the entire design. So if the whole thing was built is built around the Aqua Nevada H E S process, so in order for you go to something else, you'd be starting from zero, like like an M B R or something, so. I don't know if I answered the question.
Well, no, I just, I mean, because of that, I mean, I we were going into this assumption, we're we're not looking to do a different technology. We paid for ninety percent designs and we want to get as much of those designs as we can. So I just wonder how much flexibility for a new firm, given that they are and I don't know if that's how we're bidding this. It's like we're looking for firms interested in Aqua Nevada. And if you don't like Aqua Nevada, don't bother. You know. And and so but if they like it, are we looking at they could unwind twenty five percent of the design? Fifty percent of it?
It would be, it's really tough for me to give you a percentage. I mean, I we're at, we're at a ninety percent design right now. I don't think it needs to go back to sixty.
Okay.
I think there might be some aspects to the to the to the design that some engineering firms, including Corolo. Would like to see addressed and in the R F Q. And in the in the in the sounding meetings, we're going to address specific things that Corolo, quite frankly, would have done better with the Aqua Nevada, or I shouldn't say better, I'm sorry, different with the Aqua Nevada system.
You can say better, they're gone, the other people.
I can say, but I I think, you know, Corolo and its contemporaries are familiar with with Aqua Nevada. It's a good system. It's an excellent system for you because of the peaking factors that you're facing and the small footprint. But I I can't give you a percentage, any, you know, any firm, any design firm, if they're going to stamp it as a designer of record. They're going to want to get under the hood a little bit, make sure that everything's okay. And in the in the R F Q process again. And more so in the R F P. Corolo is going to give these other, our peer engineering firms, our insight on what could be tightened up.
Thank you, councillor Afghan. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have several questions. The first one is for the city manager. Is operating this size of a wastewater treatment our core competency?
Well, no, that's why we're recommending that we not create a new competency.
Okay, so operation and maintenance, we got to outsource it. Unless we want to.
Think in the long run, it'll be more cost effective and lead to a better result for the community.
Thank you. Director, I assume that there are termination clauses in our future contract?
That contract has not been written yet. But like I mentioned before, we need to balance any sort of flexibility that we want to build into the contract with the cost that we would pay for that flexibility.
Okay. Is there any other technology other than the fancy word that councillor was using that I can't repeat? Is there any other technology that would deliver the same performance for the wastewater treatment that we're looking for?
I'll I'll answer that by saying I think that this by by having a ninety percent design in hand is unique. We talked about that already. But it's also a unique opportunity in that we can put a near completed product on the table for vendors to choose from, or we can challenge the vendors to say, if you can do something better. And and at the end of the day, it's at a better value and a better cost to the city. Then that is something that would be in our best interest. So is there a better technology out there? To be determined, but if there is and a vendor is willing to do it at a value that is competitive for the city. Then we'll receive that proposal and we'll evaluate it against the others.
So what I'm hearing is that we don't know. Because I.
We don't think so because it is part of the R F P process for the plant that we designed. We went through a pretty significant evaluation of alternative technologies. But all of the technologies that are available, they have some limitations. So Kyle just said peaking. That means it rains in the winter here. Right? And so there are technologies out there that might deliver a great wastewater for us in the summer, but terrible in the winter because of the amount of extra water we have in the system. There are some that are out there that might have the same environmental performance, but use a lot more energy. So I think that what we think we have done so far is explore all of the available technologies and we sort of optimized it for the variables that are available to us. If we were in a different climate, we might use a different tech. So we don't think so, but if there's a vendor out there who has access to something that we don't know about it and it performs on energy efficiency and seasonal rainfall and the the nature of our flows, which are mostly residential, then I think we'll entertain their proposal is I think what Stefan's trying to say. But we're going to write the criteria as if Aqua Nevada is the answer. So essentially, we're assuming Aqua Nevada is the answer. We're going to write the evaluation criteria with that as a baseline. And if somebody can outperform the baseline.
Right.
Good on them, but we we don't think they will. Does that make sense?
It it does make sense and I appreciate the way you explained it. There are two other dimensions that I'm thinking right now. One was, one is, at the time we had this conversation last time, I specifically asked the question. Are there novation clauses in the current contract that the new contractor, the new vendor can pick up the design and the designers and finish the design so they don't have to go to another engineer? Because I think what I'm hearing here is that the current designers may not finish the design and that's a concern for me.
So the city owns the work product that was delivered at ninety percent. Any new team that comes on, and this is what we're talking about about unwinding. They're going to need to be the official engineer of record for that design. And so that's what we're talking about. We're talking about there's going to need to be some unwinding of that work product if they choose to pick up that ninety percent partially completed product. I think it is important to keep in mind the percentage of effort in doing that relative to the project as a whole. We're talking probably on the magnitude of point one percent, this unwinding relative to the entire project. Maybe less than that.
But I. So the city owns the documents.
Yes.
With a very specific design company.
Right.
Can the future vendor contract with that engineer under a novation agreement that they will finish the design so the unwinding is very, very limited?
So I understand your question. We are actually recommending that that not take place and the reason is for competition. So with those vendors available to participate. It creates an opportunity for one potential vendor to enter into terms that would that would create favoritism, that would create exclusivity. In other words, create an uncompetitive environment, whereas those firms that have that are uniquely familiar with that design. If one vendor, again, that is most likely operations led can can enter into a contract with those engineers for the point one percent or less of this project and prevent the other proposers from having the same opportunity. And putting them inherently at a disadvantage and thus likely driving up the cost to the city for the three proposals that we may get.
Do we not have a proposal from them to finish the contract? To finish the design to a hundred percent?
Right, so so what we're talking, so what you're implying there is then essentially going into a completing the design and then doing a procurement for construction and operations. While we could do that, the disadvantage in that is we we would then be setting out a procurement where the proposers are not owning the design. So now there's that constructibility input that we're not getting. There's that operability input that we're not getting because we just, the advantage to that would be to limit the unwinding and and again, we're talking about a very, very small amount of effort relative to the whole project. But the disadvantage is now we're setting our construction up with more risk than than we would otherwise. We're setting our operations up with more risk than we would otherwise. Thank you.
So I can I just interject a little bit in here? There's a lot of other work besides just the drawings that has gone into this that and 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 I totally get what you're saying, but I think we've we've moved, removed a lot of the obstacles or figured out a lot of the obstacles in this project. And so from the design standpoint, I I do understand, I mean, we are in this system with Aqua Nevada, whatever.
Arena.
Nevada. That's what we're prone to do, but there is that possibility that either somebody is is going to pick it up and go forward with it, but have their way of doing things. And that's going to be a pretty small cost. Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, relative to the overall project. Again, we're we're on, you know, a scale of about six hundred million dollars for this overall program and probably a few hundred thousand dollars worth of design remaining.
Right.
And so if we right. And so any efficiencies that we gain in construction and operations are going to outweigh that remaining expense that's in the design phase.
Right, and I would only say that we need to open it up as far as we can so we get the highest competition for design, so we get the most competitive situation. And you guys know how to do that. I think, and I and I agree with your methodology because I love the while we can always get a divorce and I I agree that we went through a divorce, but it was probably at the right stage that we did that.
Yeah.
In this situation. I also think that in the bigger picture of things. We'll get in, I mean, part of the procurement operational part of it is that we have to pick the little bidder, right? If they meet all the criteria or 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 is it? No.
I don't think so. You're going to want to pick the one that's sort of the best overall for the and some of your criteria will not be financial. That's another advantage of this way of doing the procurement.
Okay, so we have the ability to subjectively say if we want to marry the person, the firms together.
Yeah, we can we can consider non-financial dimensions to what they're going to do.
So if if that having that that ability to do that, we can test it and we can do some dating or whatever we want to do in the in the process that we go through. And once we get it, the contract signed. Obviously, they'll want an exit clause, too, if we're complete, you know, non-workable people as well, right? I mean, it's kind of a mutual benefit. I I I think we enter in a contract where both people win, right? Isn't that the idea? Because this is a long range of of marriage sort of for the next thirty years, so I think we're good at, I mean, we haven't done it before, but I think we're good at least setting that up and I my concern is just to have a competitive marketplace out there that more people will come and be interested in the project. And I love the idea that when they do do the final design, build, run it, the whole thing, they're in it for the long term. And and that's, I think, that's going to give us the best economic outcome for both parties, so.
Right. And the best overall, yeah, product. And it sounds like that's where the market is. That if we just went for design build, that there's not a big market for that. I'm guessing we wouldn't get that many responsive proposals then, yeah?
We might get lots, but you guys know what's happening to the construction costs right now, right?
Yeah. Yeah. So was that not true? So there would be people interested in just the build, for sure. And and a whole separate set. I mean, is there any overlap between these worlds? Is there a set that does D B O M and then a completely separate?
Kyle, you can probably speak to this better than I can.
Yeah, there's there's overlap. There's certainly overlap in the market. There there'll be teams that do design build. There'll be teams that do fully integrated design, build, operate, you know, that that and the challenge that I see isn't necessarily if you go on the design builder route. The challenge, based on my current understanding and impressions of the market is that finding a design builder to finish up the design and build the plant is wouldn't be the challenge. It would be to it would be to find a contract operations firm if you chose not to operate it yourself. That would be willing to A, take on an Aqua Nevada technology or a plant in general that they weren't involved in operations led design and construction. That would be more challenging.
That that would be an unusual arrangement.
It would mainly considering the size of your facility.
I see. Okay. Okay, well, makes good sense. You have another question, councillor Afghan?
Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I feel like the the strategy that. Yes, Mr. Mayor. I feel like the, the strategy that we talked about back some months ago has changed. And we had talked about, we're going to use this design, we're going to go with another company, but we're going to finance it. Now I'm hearing that we are going to open it up to other engineers. We may change the design. I feel like we're going backward. And I feel like we're, we're also penalizing the engineers who have already done ninety percent of the work. And they can finish the work. It may even be cheaper than any other engineers getting involved. So there's a lot of unknown for me.
So I don't think the plan has changed. I think even when we decided to leave Epcor, I think Anthony, while he was still here, did share with you that any other engineering firm would need to review the design. I, I, I do think that if you want to allow, was it FICO? I can't remember who was the engineer, FICO or no?
WSP?
W, yeah, to participate, you do give that firm a competitive advantage. Okay. So that's really, I mean, if, if you want that as a council, let Stefan know, we'll let them bid. But you do give the rest of, the rest of the bidding field a signal.
Yeah.
And I, I think, so talking about the, the most cost-effective way to finish the design is absolutely to, to have the engineers that went to ninety percent finish the design. They don't have to reperform the calculations that they've already done. Any other engineering firm would. Why I'm saying that that's not necessarily the best case for the project as a whole is that amount of effort to finish the design is, is probably on the magnitude of a few hundred thousand dollars. So while that engineering firm that has already performed the ninety percent plants could save maybe a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand dollars than the other firm, by not having those advantages that we talked about of having the constructability input, the operations input, and then also as another intangible, the potential competitive impact that that would have on us could wipe away any, any and all and more so any of those savings that we were to see on that.
I'm hearing that you say we would have constructability input, operational input. I'm assuming they were all done through the ninety percent.
They, they were done on the ninety percent, but that constructability input and operations input was from the Epcor's construction team and from Epcor's operation team. These other vendors will be different construction teams and different operations teams. They'll have different means and methods of building the plant. They'll have different means and methods of operating the plant. And so while yes, those, that feedback was received, it's, it's different when it will be the team that is operating it, chiming in on the design and guiding the, the construction as opposed to just having some contractor review it or some operations. We could do, I mean, that's a possible element in like the design bid-build approach. You could hire a third party to provide constructability input or hire a third party to provide a peer review on how you could operate this plant. But if it's not the contractor that will be building it or the operating entity that will be operating it,
Right.
it, it's, it's only worth so much at that point. Yes, they're, they're informed in the subject matter, but they're not the ones, there's not that vested interest.
Well, thank you. This has been a great discussion. Let's, uh, we're going to conduct one hearing on both resolutions. So perhaps, Mr. War, we really appreciate your presence here tonight and your helpful guidance throughout this process. And I think we're going to perhaps say good night to you.
My pleasure. Thanks for having me.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
And we'll move on to a consideration of, or the presentation on twenty-four eighteen here. Yes, one hearing and.
So Resolution twenty-four eighteen is very closely related to the one we just discussed. This is for owner's advisor services. So this resolution would amend the existing contract for Corolo engineers, which includes Kyle that was just here, as well as some other technical experts in the industry. They have an existing contract in place that helped guide us from both a administrative, procedural, legal perspective as well as a technical perspective to get to the ninety percent point. And what their proposed amendment is, is now to take us from where we are today and get us through the upcoming procurement. So that would include the request for qualifications, the request for proposals. It would include negotiating terms and conditions with the selected vendor and get us into the design phase for that, to, to take the next steps with this project.
And not including the final?
Not including the final. So it would be our intent to, upon execution of the contract with the eventual partner for the design, build, operate phase of the project, we would then amend the Corolo contract again in order to provide those owner's advisor services to us for those remaining phases.
It needs eight ninety.
Does that number make sense to you then? It's about the almost the same as to get us to ninety percent just to do this RFQ.
Yeah, there's, there's quite a bit in this scope. So while we talked about it being a unique opportunity, it is still a unique procurement that we're going to be putting together. And there's quite a bit of complicated language that needs to go into the contract to fold in the design parameters, the design criteria that will be allowed as well as market sounding, market outreach to get the participation from the potential vendors. There's also quite a bit of, we talk about a ninety percent design. There's quite a bit of elements that are unfinished at this point, unresolved. And those, you may remember from previous presentations, there's an alkalinity element to the influence that comes in that needs to be addressed, which is essentially a new component of the plant that needs to be designed and permitted and, and all of those things. There's also an element at the headworks that needs to be resolved, generator sizing. And there's a couple more of these unresolved items that need to be properly framed in our procurement to make sure that the proposers write on them. And then I think Anthony spoke on this, you know, at the last meeting, and I know he liked to include the, the consultant spending in a lot of this. So I looked at, we're, we're still kind of within the, the general, and this is a soft rule, but the general guidelines for what is a reasonable amount of professional services to spend on a project well, really of any sort of a percentage of this. So we're still within those general guidelines of what that would be and actually quite a bit under.
Counselor.
I'd be interested to know how the fee for Corolo's services is structured. Is it a flat fee? Is it project-based or is it a royalty on the size of the engineering DBOM deal?
So their contract is hourly contract not to exceed.
Okay. So there's no royalty or, I call it a royalty, a percentage of the contract value of the DBOM?
No.
Not at all?
No, it's a straight hourly rate.
Okay.
Not to exceed.
Okay.
A task-based contract. And then it's, it's worth noting that the that, so this would be an amendment and then we'd be looking to, again, kind of mentioned this before, but amend it again upon execution of the contract and then for them to continue their owner advisor role through design, construction and some initial operations period, whatever that looks like, maybe a year, maybe two years, something like that.
Right. Okay. Oh, Counselor.
So could you kind of, so the extra eight ninety gets us through that whole stage?
The, the eight ninety that we're seeking to approve gets us, gets us to an executed contract with a new partner.
Right. Okay. And is this including the attorney's fees and everything else or that's on top of that?
No, the attorney's fee is, is a separate consultant, Hawkins, and that's, that's separate from this. This is, Corolo provides us with technical and, and, and alternative delivery expertise.
Right. And then is there one other? And then Jill?
Correct. So there, there's, there's a team of consultants. So we have Universal Field Services and Cable Houston are providing us with land rights
Right.
assistance. There's Corolo, Hawkins, and Jill's firm that provides us with this alternative delivery slash legal slash type medical advice.
This is good business, man.
Oh, it's, yeah. I mean, the, the plan, it actually only cost a couple hundred thousand dollars to build the plant. No, just kidding. I will say that I've been through this process with this whole group for, I don't know, is it four years, five years, six? It's been a long time. And I haven't flushed once because I'm waiting for the new plant. Just kidding. The, the big picture is they have been exceptional in this whole process.
Yes.
I've worked with a lot of consultants over the years and this group knows what they're doing and they have a ton of expertise. And I, while we may not want to spend
We never want to spend.
I doubt any of us know anything about any of this and nor should we expect our staff to. So I'm all in support of, of, of continuing and they've done a great job up until then. Same way with Hawkins. Everyone has done a top-notch job.
Exactly.
We just are in a stumbling block because we have to change. So it's going to cost us.
It is what it is.
It's got, yeah, we're going to spend a little bit more money because of, but over the long term, we're going to save a lot of money.
Be saving a lot. Yeah, exactly.
Because theoretically, so.
Okay. And I'm sorry, Director, we kind of interrupted the representation. Was there more to the?
That's okay. Really what I wanted to talk about was next steps in the overall project. So assuming that the recommendations that these special procurements are approved tonight, the next steps would be some, as Kyle alluded to, some market outreach to talk to potential vendors. That would be next month, July, advertise that request for qualifications, receive the, receive the proposals and then shortlist them this fall. And then towards the end of the year, advertise a request for proposals. Kind of middle of, of next year, we would select the highest ranked firm and then proceed with negotiations on a contract with them. And then that fall, give them a notice to proceed. So they would wrap, they would start design in earnest in the fall of next year, work through fall into spring and then likely break ground at some point in twenty twenty-six. We're looking at construction being about thirty months.
Wow. Okay.
We'll have to do land use permits again, right?
We will.
Thank you. Okay, let's, we'll go ahead. Thank you, Director, for the presentation on both these items. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Ask if there's anyone here who would like to testify. And seeing none, we're going to then close the public hearing and we'll entertain a motion on Resolutions.
Move to adopt Resolutions twenty-four nineteen and twenty-four eighteen.
Okay. All right. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, one opposed. Motion passes six, one. Thank you, Director Brannus. Thank you, Director Brannus. Good work. Appreciate the presentation. Information from counsel. Anyone? Information to share? Okay.
Go ahead. You go first. You go first.
Are we first?
You go first.
I just want to commend the city, even though it was more of a supporting role. It looks like the lake run was amazing, even though it is very wet. But I don't know if you saw the people running, but they're all very courageous.
Yes.
But the city did a great job of helping organize and make it an obvious success like it is every year. So I want to just congratulate everybody involved. I didn't, I didn't run, but I watched.
Yes.
Yeah, that's true. I shouldn't have run.
You would have.
If, if I was able.
Yes, yes, that's right. Just a reminder too, we, May tenth is a deadline for applications for boards and commissions. So encourage folks out there in the community to apply. That's for the youth boards as well. And just quickly on the, on the regional level, you know, we have a couple of things going on. Well, one is in regards to kind of like local transit. And I think that Mr. Bennett recently talked with the chamber, you know, we've been talking about community shuttle for a while. And, you know, we have no resources to pay for community shuttle, but we all pay a lot of tax. Well, people that work in this town pay a payroll tax for transportation and employers pay an even larger tax for transportation. And we get some, you know, some, we see some of the, the fruits of that, but not much. So there's a advisory board that this, the stiff, these stiff dollars, which are the employee paid payroll tax dollars, they were, they are, they get Oregon moving dollars intended to fortify transit funding, expand and enhance services. There are no city representatives on the advisory board except for one person, a staff member from the city of Portland, who I'm sure is fantastic. But it's heavy, heavy, heavy Multnomah County, nonprofit organizations, and that's pretty much it. And so through the metro mayors, I'm working to try to get mayors represented on that advisory board committee so that we can better work to try to find funding that's responsive to the needs of cities in the region. And we'll see if that is.
Yeah, you should know, we recently have concluded that the viability of a city-run shuttle or, or running, trying to run a shuttle with stiff funds is just not, it's just not there. So the other thing we're going to be doing is trying to meet with TRIMET to see not just what their short-term plans are, but what their long-term plans are for particularly connecting our two town centers.
Yes, I think we have some, I have some new ideas.
Good. I'm glad to hear that.
Yes.
Bring back the horse and buggy.
The other, yeah. That would be delightful. That would be delightful. The, the other big regional topic has been around the, the regional flexible funds, these RUFAs. And there, there's proposals to change the, you know, allocation scheme in this new, you know, there's a lot of, a chunk of these flexible funds that come in and it's just a, a small proportion of kind of the overall, you know, federal funding dollars that come in. But they're intended to be flexible, you know, and, and, and projects compete for these dollars. But we have, the region has typically taken and bonded on these dollars. So instead of, you know, so a chunk of the funds that we get just go to repay the bonds, you know. So they've been able to do big projects with these dollars instead of mini smaller projects. And so the open question is, do we do that? But they're also looking at raising the threshold, which would, so they, they talk about wanting to be more responsive to the needs of smaller cities and rural communities. But then at the same time, they're increasing the threshold criteria to be able to make an application. So, so anyway, we've been advocating for them to not institute kind of these new, these new policies, the RUFAs so that cities like Lake, I mean, it would preclude us from really submitting any project by raising the dollar threshold of planning grants to like a million dollars, which is a lot. Think of a million dollars just in planning dollars. And we don't ever spend really a million on, on, on a citywide transportation project. It'd be very unusual. We spent seventy thousand dollars to do the whole corridor. Project on McFay, and that was a big piece of work. Imagine a million dollars on that, you know, it's like this. So anyway, that's my update. Okay.
First, I just want to note that it's Public Service Week, and so I want to thank my colleagues. I want to thank all of you for your service to the community, but all the folks who work here at the city for their dedication. We get one week a year. Actually, next week we recognize police officers and then later in the month, we recognize our public works crews, which are some of our first responders that never get the credit of being first responders. Second thing I wanted to let you know is that it is campaign season. There is going to be a significant national dignitary who's going to be attending a fundraiser close by on Thursday. And the motorcade will probably significantly disrupt traffic on Thursday afternoon. I wish I could give you details. I cannot give you details. But if someone asks you, why is there so, are there so many traffic jams in LO on Thursday afternoon?
Thursday, right?
You can say it's a significant dignitary who's hosting a fundraiser where their travel.
The dignitary is hosting a fundraiser?
The dignitary is having a fundraiser in the general area. I can't tell you where.
In, in the city, no?
No.
No.
Is it the, is it the president?
I am not, it is not the president.
No.
Well, I'll give you more details Thursday after it's over. But if you have questions, it's, you can just basically say, yep, that sucks. All right. And last but not least, the first farmer's market of the year is Saturday. Please come on down. First farmer's market. You can get your hanging basket.
It's this Saturday?
It's this Saturday. It starts the day before Mother's Day, just in time for you all to go down and buy the hanging baskets and flowers you need to thank the mothers in your life and hope that there's strawberries on the first farmer's market.
In the basket?
Well, that would be, if you, if, if I were your mom, I'd be happy to get not just the hanging basket, but also the strawberries. I don't care if you put them together.
Bring strawberries, but.
First farmer's market to me is the symbol of. First farmer's market to me is the symbol of it's going to be summer.
Do you have free vegetables?
No.
No, it's not free.
You can go pick them at the Lusher Farms. Just go on there and take what you need. Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Bennett. So now we are going to go into executive session and this will conclude, you know, the rest of the meeting. But before we go into executive session, we'll ask Ms. Osnack to read the legal parameters for us.
Nine something one on your bet.
Oh, it's not over yet. You guys have more to.
No, that's what I'm saying, nine some.
Mayor, members of the council, this executive session is going to be held pursuant to organized statute one nine two point six six two sub two A and F, which is to consider the employment of a public officer, employee, staff member or individual agent and to consider informational records that are exempt by law from public inspection. Designated staff and representatives of the news media shall be allowed to attend the executive session in the adjoining room. And representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. And as always, no decision will be made in executive session.
Thank you very much. Well, this will conclude the broadcast portion of the meeting. We are going to recess and then re-adjourn in the, the side room. Thank you. Go.